All right. Okay. All right, folks, we're going to get started. So I have to give the high sign to the TV people? Okay. Calling to order the meeting of the Select Board. Thank you, Renee. That's the first time you've ever done that.
I never did it my whole time I was there.
Even when you were Chair, you never did that. Very good. No, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Select Board for February 1st, 2022. And would everybody please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you.
Goodness.
Want to take that? Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. We have a full house tonight by the looks, so great. We don't have any public hearings. Do we have anybody here for open time for the public before we get into our couple of presentations? Just anything that's not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, we'll get to you. Okay? Not hearing anybody? All right. We have two presentations tonight, one from our auditors with Tanya Campbell here to present, and also from the Hampton Ponds Association. And given the crowd, Tanya has suggested that she'd be willing to go second and let all of you folks do what you need to do so that you don't have to spend all evening here. So if that's okay. And with the Select Board's permission, I would like to make that a way to go. So we'll ask, I believe it's Nancy, Nancy Velego, to stand up and come on up front to the bike, introduce yourself, and tell us what you're here to talk about.
Okay. I lost the paper, but okay. My name is Nancy Velego. I have been resident of Southampton for over 30 years, and I am representing the Hampton Ponds Association tonight in the absence of Rick Epstein. Sorry, my back's due, guys. We have worked diligently to keep the lake clean and safe. For years now, we have raised money for weed treatment to control invasive weeds in the lake. We have established a police boat for public safety, and we educate the residents on good safe practices for the lake. We have some cards, but I dropped it somewhere on the way here. We have a printer, is one of our members, and he designed these cards. And Rick and I went door-to-door educating residents on picking up pet waste, using phosphorus-free detergents and fertilizers to keep the lake clean, and best practices for household chemicals. We work year-round to keep the lake safe. We are here tonight to ask for your help. It is time to recognize that we have ancient septic systems in our area that are leaching phosphorus, nitrogen, and other chemicals into the lake. We are asking for funding to bring the 20-year-old plans up to date. Cyanobacteria, I don't know if you've heard about it, it's a huge issue around the world. Locally, Congamond, East Hampton, and the Cape have had issues with it. Lakes have been closed. It's a blue-green algae that's foul-smelling, toxic. It kills all the fish, clams, snails, anything that lives in the lake. It's harmful to the bird life also. Fifteen dogs died this summer at the Cape from drinking from these lakes. It's harmful to residents that live around the lake also. There's a high rate of Parkinson's and Alzheimer's for people who live around lakes that are contaminated with this blue-green algae. When a lake is deemed to have cyanobacteria, it is closed for all recreation for extended periods of time. Property values plummet. Westfield hooked up to the sewer system about 15 years ago. We need to join them. We need to be proactive. It's better to prevent than to cure. Even if you don't live on the water, clean lakes are important to you. From our lake, the water flows into two smaller ponds, and then it goes to a stream to East Mountain Golf Course where it's used for irrigation, and then it goes into another stream that eventually goes to the Westfield River. So all that would be contaminated. So connecting these homes to the municipal septic system will provide safe and clean lakes for years and generations to come. I believe, Ken, can you take another?
If others from the Association would like to speak, they just need to come up and introduce themselves, sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Just to add upon what Nancy said.
Yeah, could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Ken Boucher. I live on Pequot Road, over by that area. The situation here, she mentioned the criticality of cyanobacteria. We've also been in contact with Congamond Lakes, you know, in Southwick. And they spent a tremendous amount of money to treat their lake and get it such that it's still swimmable and haveable, et cetera, et cetera. I also read in the paper this morning that they've got a problem with now flow of outside, flow from the lakes to their outside tributaries, and they're going to have to appeal to the federal government for that. Okay? The thing from Ty &amp; Bond, as Nancy said, they talked with us and met with us, and one of the engineers from Ty &amp; Bond used to work for the company that did the previous assessment. So all that material is available, all the drawings, all the routings, the equipment list, everything's available. So what they've proposed and offered for us is basically a plan where they would update that original plan and mark up any new drawings, you know, put bid for the project. It's pretty detailed what they'll do. They'll give an RFP and make presentations to the town. But the thing here, we got to realize is, for this effort, it's about roughly, oh, probably $12,000, $13,000. But we got a whole new package committed. So we'd be able to capitalize on all that work that was done 20 years ago when they wanted to put in sewers there. And they basically want to take into account the Southampton area, Southampton side of the ponds, the Pequot Pond especially, and likewise extend it further into the Southampton No work was done at all from Westfield lined up because of various other reasons, that's the town, et cetera. So the other big thing is that, again, cyanobacteria, not to beat a dead horse here, but that's really, we're in a big jeopardy on that right now. And the thing that we're also curious about, if we can go after some more money, state money. I understand there's going to be some grants giving or some, so many millions of dollars, billions of dollars. And I know the state does have some money allocated for improvement of water sources and things of this nature. So again, the intent is, if we go ahead with this plan, again, the initial effort here to come up with a plan for the whole thing, update the plan, we come up with that, then what's the possibility, getting grant money? If no grant money, then what would it cost us as property owners? So in a way, I feel time is of the essence here. You know, particularly with climate control, it's, so we're going to make the jeopardy higher. And like I said, we could capitalize on this work that's already been done. And so our basic intent right now, our basic request is for the, to go forth with this plan, this updated plan. Again, it's around, it's around $13,000. But there's quite a bit of work here. I don't know if anybody gave you a copy of this?
Yes, we have a copy. Thank you.
And it's quite involved.
Yeah.
And if we can get going on that, come, this is a, you know, good, good amount of legwork here, but it'll be, it'll give us a lot of data and give us a good plan here. And again, these people are available to answer anything, make presentations, what have you.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's what the status is right now. So your consideration would be very much appreciated.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, okay. Anyone else on the same subject, or how about some questions from my colleagues here? Anyone? I guess, go ahead.
I have just an initial question. My name is Maureen Groden, by the way. You refer to it as a lake, and I'm just looking, it's actually a, it's a state pond. And I'm just wondering, what role has the state played? You're doing a lot to prevent further problems with your septic system, and I'm just wondering, in, you know, what role has the state played in helping you?
So the state and the cap?
Yeah, you have to go to the mic. Sorry. We are being recorded on Channel 191.
Oh, well, let me sit down. Hi, my name is Don Ledger. I'm part of the Clean Lakes Committee. And the state, over the past years, has granted us funds for doing the Clean Lakes Treatment, taking care of the weeds and all that, by grants, and they come in and help us out with that. But as far as this aspect of it, that's yet to come because the state will get involved with the funds that are being, I assume they would, that they'll be able to give us funds once, but it's up to the town first because that's where we are. We're in the town, you've got to approve it, then it goes to the state. And, you know, but they have in the past been very helpful, helped getting us to do the Clean Lakes funding.
Yeah, and I think you've worked with the Conservation Commission here in town for a lot of those cleanups.
Yeah, DCC and all of that.
Kind of on an annual basis or whatever.
And then the town of Westfield has been giving us funds every year to maintain the weed treatment.
Very good.
I mean, speaking for myself, I know that this has been on the radar for a long period of time, and it hasn't really come in front of this board for quite a long time.
Right.
I just feel like I need a little bit more, I have a lot of questions. I certainly support the idea of having a septic system in that area. It's been a long-time problem, and I don't want anybody to be in health risk. How many residents stand to benefit from hooking into the Westfield?
Twenty?
Probably around 100.
100?
Depends how far they do, we've got the map. There's been more houses added since the map was turned on.
Nancy, just a question, would that be 100 residents or households?
Households.
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 So more residents, more than, more people than that, 100 households?
Right.
Okay. Right. Yeah, okay.
Currently, septic system is available to the folks and your neighbors who are from Westfield but not anybody in Southampton, is that correct?
You're right.
Yeah. Sorry, we've got to all be back at the mic when you're speaking, so just stand up in line here, I'm sorry, because we can't all hear. Thank you. So I guess, you know, part of it is tying into that about how many of those would be already hooked into Westfield, and how many are we talking about? None of those 100?
Those are the ones.
Those are Southampton only that are not hooked into any kind of sewer system?
Yes and no.
Okay.
If I may interrupt there again, Ken Boucher. The situation is, right now, we did a little homework, a little, and contacted Westfield, DPW and that, and we can ZAN tie into their septic, their sewer system. Okay? The other part is, and somebody from Westfield, fortunately, can't make it tonight, but they did, if you look at the map here on the, let's just say, east side of the pond, they did put some sewer lines in here, but they didn't bring the line over to where the sewer septic system is, the actual sewer system for the town to get treated. So it's a matter of, they're going to have to tie in these lines that are already here. In other words, they laid lines but didn't hook them up into the actual sewer system.
Okay.
Okay, so you've got that effort. And the other thing is that there's homes on the lake, they're very close proximity to the lake, and a lot of these lots are small, okay? So they don't have any room to expand, to put another leaching field in, or bigger septic tank, things of this nature. So I hate to use the word, but it's almost like a time bomb out there, you know?
Yeah, there's limitations, for sure. Yeah.
Definitely, yeah, yeah. So again, another reason why it's probably prudent to keep these into consideration at this point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I'm assuming, I don't know, but the reason all these studies were done, and I think I've seen, maybe that pile of reports, I had seen once when I first joined on the Select Board that were from C Consultants anyway, so I know that there were lots of studies that were done, and at the time, I'm gathering Southampton didn't have the funds or the request didn't come to Southampton?
We went to a meeting and we lost.
Sorry.
Nancy Velego.
We did go to a meeting and we lost by four votes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was very sad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So they did leave those lines in because Westfield expected us to be able to hook up. That's why some of those lines were already pre-done for us, which is wonderful.
So now the part of this update, though, would be to understand whether Westfield still has the capacity?
They do, we already checked.
They do.
Yeah, we checked before we started all this. And you have the paperwork from C Consultants. They are no longer a firm, but the engineer who worked on the project is working with us, and he works for Ty &amp; Bond now, and he's been, he has the zip drives and all the stuff that go with that report.
All right. Good. All right.
One more thing. Geraldine Swanson from Board of Health has been very supportive of this. She's had several meetings with us and actually arranged to have the engineers come in. So she's definitely behind this.
Great.
Again, the previous legwork, if you want to call it that, that's been done, all the drawings, everything there is with Ty &amp; Bond now, even though it's a different company today. They were able to transfer the drawings and everything else. So there's a lot of material there we can capitalize on.
Right. So it's a matter of revalidating rather than?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
They want to walk the properties again because there's been more houses built.
Sure.
They lost some of their right-of-ways. It's the top two engineers who worked on it 20 years ago who are lucky that they're still able to work on it now.
Great.
To save a lot of time and money.
For sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So at this point, I don't know that we would be, I'm certainly willing, any other questions offhand from anybody?
Well, I'm just wondering if there might be, if perhaps Ed could sort of walk us through, I mean, I know you weren't here in the past when it went to town meeting vote, but there's a certain amount that individual residents would be accessing the service through Westfield, and what does it look like on our end, though, in terms of the steps? I mean, obviously, the update to the engineering plan there, I think it's great that this person's still available through Ty &amp; Bond, but can you just walk us through the first few steps that would take us to help these folks?
We'd need to update the plans, and then if it looks feasible to do, probably have plans made in more detail, we'd also have to have conversations with the city of Westfield to make sure that they are willing to do it, they do have the capacity, and we'd have to work out some type of agreement with them, an intermunicipal agreement, depending on, you know, if they are willing to bill the Southampton residents directly and receive those monies for them, if we would have to set up our own sewer division to do that, and we'd also have to, would have to go to town meeting. I'm guessing it'll be expensive enough that we would have to borrow, you know, for it. So it would take a two-thirds majority vote, and then we would have to, well, in this particular case, it would probably be Westfield that would be probably bidding it and doing it since it's going into their sewer system and move forward from there.
And so on our end, other than paying for an update to this engineering plan, if they had existing lines, then there might be residents would get funding or grants to individually hook in, or would that be a Southampton?
So do the Southampton.
So we would actually, the funds that would be needed would be to, for them to lay all the sewer, even the ones that haven't accessed the houses, and directly into their residence. So it would be pretty much setting up everything, and then from there, from that point on, it would be the residents who would pay for the service, or no?
Correct.
Okay. And 100, about 100 houses or households?
Households, yeah, that's what you said. Yeah, okay.
It's a decent-sized area.
Yeah. And so the initial funding, this $13,000, is looked at for the updating of the study and the work of the consultant to revalidate things, basically. Okay. Okay. Good. All right. Yeah, just, yes, go ahead. I'm standing in line. All right, we'll give you a couple more minutes, and then we'll keep on moving, okay?
Again, I was told that all that we previously had and previous plan was something like $300,000 to do that.
Yeah.
So this is a bargain, if I, you know, with respect to that. The other thing that threw our mind here, and maybe we're thinking ahead or thinking out of context, but I know the state eventually wants to get rid of septic systems, okay? I mean, that's all well and good, but the state also wants, they've done quite a bit of this work on the Cape already from some of these contaminated ponds, and I understand that there's money the state has, whether it's federal money or whatever. It's in the beginning from what I heard, but again, you're closer to that than I am, but again, some of that money, we heard the state wants to do some sewer upgrades or some sewer incorporations, recognizing this situation too. So how much, how much of that will be eligible for is, is something I guess we're going to pursue as well. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Good. Yes, one last comment, and then we'll move on.
So I was curious about?
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, Marsha Mazorski, and I live right on the pond as well.
He's talking to the mic, like, pull the mic down.
Yeah, short, too. So I was really interested in the question of next steps, and I was wondering, do we make a motion then to try to approve the study of $13,000 or appropriation of this money in order to be able to update the study? Is that like the next step that we do?
That would, I think, be a next step. I don't think that we have the $13,000 handy at the moment. We don't have a budget line for it. One of the things that we're going to be looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be the American Rescue Plan funds that are out there that the town will be getting, and that's part of the survey that's out there, which hopefully you've all answered because it did have a question on there. We will be getting through with the survey within a couple of weeks, two, three weeks, and then sometime in March, we'll be doing more, looking at some of the results of that survey, and then starting to make, I think, some actual decisions about how we might spend some of this ARPA money. And so I think we'd ask for a bit of patience until we got to that point where we see the results of the survey, and then we've got some other data behind us that I think would help make the argument even stronger.
Excellent. Should we plan then on coming back in a month or two or something like that?
We can let you know. We'll see where we are in that. I think, you know, you don't have to come in force, you can send a delegate if you'd like to, but it's up to you.
Okay.
Thank you, though, for showing up tonight. But, I mean, that would be my recommendation. I don't know if anybody else has any?
I would totally, I would love to have a meeting set up that at one point, we're going to do a closing of the actual survey. We just want, you know, the town's getting the money, and a lot of towns have already decided what to do with the ARPA funds. We just want, you know, resident feedback. And it does cover for, I mean, the water department's interested in having some funds, and certainly there's a lot of people that, I mean, this has been a long time coming. I would love to have a meeting set up with our health director and, you know, Representatives for your group once that, you know, sort of, survey is closed, because we will be making decisions around how that money will be spent, so that would be great.
So a quick thing, my experience came from, I used to live, moved here just two years ago, in the middle of all this fun stuff, and swam extensively for the last 30 years on a pond up in Boxford, and we had some similar problems up there. And one of the things, there was a group of about 30 swimmers that would swim across the pond and back, and we always knew, do not go out on the pond for about three or four days after a heavy rain, because we were always worried about all of the area septic tanks leaching into the pond. So it's something, you know, also, yeah, keep in mind.
Great.
Safety of everybody. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, okay, good. Well, thanks, I think, for tonight. I think I would say that this is where we would like to leave it. So thank you for your interest in coming forward, everybody. I really appreciate getting to know the Hampton Ponds Association. I've known that you existed, but I've never had a chance to meet anybody. So thank you for coming before the Select Board and bringing all your neighbors to come and talk about this, and I think it's definitely on our radar screen now. So as we get forward a little bit more, in another month or so, we'll be starting to look at some of the results of the survey and start really narrowing down some of the decisions about how we would spend some of the money coming into town from the American Rescue Plan. Okay? So give it another month or so, and we'll be probably back in touch sometime in March, okay?
So can I just add one thing?
Yes. Please come on up.
I'm Linda Valargian. I have a concern because there's maybe 100 families on the pond that we're going to be the lone man on the totem pole for taking a vote in getting these funds. Is that, you know, from the survey? Will the survey results drive who, no?
No, I mean, not totally. It's one of the questions on the survey. So the survey will tell us how the number of people that have responded to the survey think about some of the priorities.
Right, right.
But just because it doesn't come up maybe as the top priority doesn't mean that it wouldn't be considered.
Okay, okay. That's what my, thank you.
Guess that would be my point, yeah. Okay. So the survey will show us, hopefully, the extent to which people feel that something is a priority. Okay? I'm hoping. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with your time? Thanks very much. Appreciate it. All right. Thanks for coming, everybody. Okay, so, next. Hey, John. How you doing? All right, very good. So next, we'll have Tanya Campbell, please, come on up as representative of our audit firm, and we'll ask folks to move on, move on out, please, so we can continue on out. We're still being recorded, so, thank you. So this will be the results of our 2020 audit, and we'd like to have Tanya give us an overview of the results of the audit report, and however you'd like to do that, Tanya, in terms of hitting the highlights, the management letter, however you'd like to?
I thought we'd just go through the whole financial statements, right? That's not what we're here to do. I mean, that's why I let them go first. No, that's fine.
Seriously, whatever you would like to do to share with us, and people watching at home to give us an idea of where we are, the things that we can improve on. We've seen a few things, obviously, the management letter, but feel free to do what you'd like.
Absolutely.
And we'll probably have a few questions from us here, hopefully, and we'll be it.
Perfect. So I was just going to start by kind of giving a brief overview of the roles and responsibilities of the different parties that are involved in the town's audit, including us as your independent auditors, management, and the Select Board as the governing body of the town. And then I figured we'd touch on the financial statements a little bit and talk about some of the key numbers in that document, and then briefly discuss the issues that were noted in the management letter. Now, in terms of our responsibilities as your independent auditor, we are ultimately responsible for expressing an opinion on the town's financial statements. We're also responsible for planning and performing our audit using a concept known as materiality to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. So an audit itself does not provide absolute assurance. We don't come in, we don't pour through every single transaction, we don't look at every invoice that was paid by the town, we don't scrutinize every receipt that was received. That is not what an audit is intended to do. Instead, the audits are conducted under a set of standards known as Government Auditing Standards. And as I mentioned before, we use a concept known as materiality. Materiality will vary based on the size of the town, and it also varies as part of our audit testing based on the different funds that the town has. So for instance, your general fund, which is the main operating fund of the town, in fiscal year 2020, the materiality was about $130,000. That doesn't mean we don't look at anything below that amount, because we most certainly do. It just means that the standards say we should focus our testing on balances at or above that level. Now, in terms of management's responsibilities, as part of the audit process, they are ultimately responsible for the financial statements themselves, and having an audit does not relieve management of that responsibility. Management is also responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal controls and ensuring that the town complies with the various laws and regulations that are applicable to all of the town's activities. As part of the audit process, they're responsible for making all financial data and supporting documents available. documents available to us in a timely fashion so we can complete our audit as efficiently and effectively as possible. And at the end of the audit, management is responsible for confirming to us the various representations that were made to us as part of the audit process. So, for instance, that the documents that they gave us were true copies of what, of an actual document, or, you know, what they told us as part of the audit process and our inquiries was true to the best of their knowledge. Now, in terms of the Select Board's responsibilities as part of the audit process, as you are the governing body of the town, you're ultimately responsible for the whole, the oversight of that entire process, which is why we're meeting here today and discussing the results of the audit. You're also responsible for just oversight of the internal control process and any risk assessment evaluation that needs to be done by the town, and discussing the results of the financial statements and management letter with the auditors. Now, in terms of your financial statements, they are presented under rules established by the Government Accounting, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASB. And if you peruse through the financial statements, you'll see a multitude of references to GASB in that, in that document. They are essentially the, the agency that is responsible for telling us how we need to report things in the financial statements and how information is required to be disclosed. We have a love-hate relationship with GASB. They like to issue new standards pretty much every year. Now, in terms of the financial statements, there are essentially five components. You have the audit opinion, management's discussion, analysis, your government-wide statements, your fund basis statements, and then your footnotes and your required supplementary information. Now, the audit opinion is the only part of the financial statements that belongs to us. As I mentioned before, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on them. In fiscal year 2020, we issued the town an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which means that based on the results of our testing, we found that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. After that comes management's discussion and analysis, which is a required narrative that precedes the financial statements themselves. It's basically a brief overview of what's included in the financial statements, as well as some of the key numbers and results of operations from the past fiscal year. So if you want a nice, short, sweet area to look, look at the management's discussion analysis, it kind of gives you a brief overview of everything. After that, you have your government-wide statements and your fund basis statements, and we'll kind of talk about those and take a look at those in just a minute. And last, you have your footnotes and your required supplementary information, which provide a great, great more detail of what's included in the financial statements themselves. So, for instance, you have a net OPEB liability, which is one number in your financial statements, but you have six or seven pages of footnotes and documentation in the back of the financial statements to talk about what that liability is, what the actuarial assumptions that were used to calculate that liability, things along that nature. So it's a, it's a great deal more, great more detail on the numbers themselves. Does anyone have any thing, questions, before I get into the actual document?
Not yet, I think.
Okay. So we're going to start with the bigger of the two documents, which is the financial statements, and just take a look at a couple of the pages. We'll look at page 14 first.
What's at the heading? Because ours aren't numbered. They aren't numbered, unfortunately.
Oh, no. Okay, so, it's about 14 pages in. It's called the Governmental Funds Balance Sheet. And I would say it looks like this, but mine has a whole bunch of notes on it.
Yeah, right after the net position?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened to the--
Yeah, there's no--
The page numbers--
It was a challenge, yeah. So it's right after--
Marina, you want to keep going a little bit more? Yep, keep going.
Net position.
You're still on the M.D.N.A., so keep going.
Double page.
Keep going.
After, after this--
One more.
I'll catch up.
All right, okay, there you go. Yep, okay.
Governmental Funds Balance.
Governmental Funds Balance Sheet, okay.
Okay, we get it.
And so your balance sheet is one of your fund basis statements, and your fund basis statements more closely resemble the internal records of the town itself. So if you look at the page, there, the first column there is General Fund, and that column actually represents the town's general fund as well as the stabilization funds. There was a GASB standard issued a few years ago that required those to be consolidated and presented in one column in your financial statements. To the right of that, you have the Community Preservation Fund, which, because of the large amount of activity and balances in that fund, it's required to be reported as a major fund, so it's shown separately. And to the right of that, you have your non-major governmental funds, which include the rest of the town's grant funds, your capital project funds, as well as your trust fund balances, with the exception of your OPEB trust. Those all get consolidated and shown in the non-major governmental funds, column there. Now, in terms of some of the key numbers on this page, if you look towards the bottom in the Fund Balances section, you'll see unassigned fund balance, and your general fund was just about $750,000 at the end of fiscal year 20. Now, that number is made up of two components. One of them is the unassigned or like unreserved balance in your general fund at the end of the year. So just over $300,000 is the general fund unassigned number. So that's what's left at the, at the end of the day, after you've reserved everything you need to reserve. If you voted free cash at a May meeting that was going to be used in the next year, that gets set aside, stuff like that. So that is essentially the starting point for the town's free cash calculation, if you want to think of it in that regard. Now, that $300,000 balance represents about 1.7% of the town's annual operating budget in fiscal year 2020. It's a little bit on the lower side. DOR recommends that free cash itself should be about 3% to 5% of the annual operating budget, so if your starting point for your free cash is about 1.7%, you know, the balance is a little low. It's, it's not a, not a big cushion there. Again, we're looking back at 2020 at this point. I can't speak to what's happened since that, so I wouldn't focus too much on these numbers, but generally speaking, it's a little bit on the low side.
Can I just ask, why would it be not a good thing to be on the low side? You would think you would want it to be more of a match, no? In terms of, you know, line items kind of matching what you originally had intended for them?
Yep, so that is, at the end of the day, you know, what you took in in revenue minus what you've had in expenses, but you want to be able to replenish that a little bit each year, so you don't want, like, you want to be sure you're budgeting your revenues conservatively, so you're, you're getting more revenue in the new budget, and turning back a little bit of your expenses every year. At the end of the day, what you have left, if you had one bad year or something that came up and that didn't go really well, that would eat away $300,000 pretty quickly, given the size of your budget. So, which is why, you know, having a little bit of a cushion in there, a little bit of a rainy day fund is better to have. Obviously, you don't want it to be huge, because it means you're overtaxing and stuff like that, but you also want to be at the point where it's, it's somewhat comfortable and you, you know if something bad happens, it's not going to, you know, be detrimental to the general.
So the percent that's better is around?
3% to 5%. Somewhere in there would be, you know, a good range to shoot for. Now, the other component of that unassigned number, which is about $445,000, is the town's general stabilization fund, which, that balances about 2.5% of the town's annual operating budget. So a little bit on the low side, but, you know, not, it's still respectable. You also have a couple other stabilization, stabilization funds as well, so you are putting money into those funds. You know, somewhere in the 5% range would, would be ideal in, in your stabilization funds, just to have, again, money set aside for a rainy day, which is what the state calls it, the rainy day fund. Again, these are 2020 numbers, so. That was all I had on that page, unless anyone had any specific questions about those numbers, or--
I guess I'm just wondering if this, how much this is related to the prediction of revenue that we would have made, and then revenue that fell short, or does that not have a link right at this particular thing?
Yeah, it certainly does. So if you, yeah, there is, and kind of towards the back of the document, it's page 60, but if you want to just make a note of it now, maybe you can look back on it later, but we do kind of show the budget versus actual, your revenues and expenses in your general fund. So in fiscal year 2020, your revenues fell short of budget by about $60,000, which was not that unusual in fiscal 2020. A lot of, a lot of cities and towns came, you know, under budget or really close to their revenue numbers, their revenue estimates there, and you turned back about $300,000 in unspent appropriations. So, you know, what you, you essentially turned back was the net of those two, $230,000, which means that you, I don't remember what you started with off the top of my head from, from the year before, sorry, but whatever you started with and then whatever you spent in free cash, plus what you turned back is, is where you end up at the end of the day in terms of your unassigned number there. Does that make sense? So it is, certainly your, how you do compared to budget is a component of that. It's one, it's one component, and there's a lot of factors that go, go into that. If you had any specific questions, you could certainly email me and I could run, like, pull those numbers together, but there's, there's a lot of moving pieces that kind of flow into that, so, yeah.
Anybody have questions?
Any other questions?
If not, keep on, keep on going.
Keep on talking, okay. If you go back two pages, it's page 12, it's the Statement of Net Position. Okay, kind of looks like the balance sheet. So the Statement of Net Position is one of your government-wide statements. And now, the purpose of the government-wide statements are to essentially take your governmental operations and show them like a business operates. So all the columns we just looked at on the previous page, your general fund, your CPA fund, and your, your grants and capital projects and trusts, those all get consolidated, consolidated together into the governmental activities column, and then the business-type activities column represents your enterprise funds. Now, as part of the consolidation process, so same before, we group all those funds together, and then we add things like your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities. So on this statement, you'll see your capital assets, you'll also see your long-term debt and your pension and OPEB liabilities. So these, these statements themselves do a really good job showing the true assets and liabilities of the town, but they're not how you operate on a day-to-day basis. So they are meaningful, but not in terms of the decisions you're going to make, you know, at next town meeting, per se. You guys, you know, you have these long-term liabilities that are out there that we record in these statements, but you're paying those as you go. So for instance, your, your pension liability, you get an annual assessment letter from the retirement system, you pay that. Your retire, your retiree health insurance costs, you get a monthly bill, you pay those, pay those as you go. But these set of statements kind of take it and, and say, you have this giant liability out here, we're going to put it on your balance sheet, and that's essentially what these statements do. So if you look kind of towards the very bottom of the page, unrestricted number in your governmental activities, it's negative $13 million, which is not unusual for pretty much every city or town that I audit. That number is a very large negative number, and that is because we are recording your net pension and your net OPEB liability, which are two biggest long-term liabilities on this statement. Now, if you look in, and we'll just talk about those two liabilities quickly, in your liability section, down towards the bottom, under the non-current, you'll see your net pension liability. At the end of the year, that was about $6.7 million. Now, that liability represents the town's share of the Hampshire County Retirement System's unfunded liability. As I mentioned before, you're required to, you're required to pay that liability, you have an annual assessment, you have to pay that every year, and ultimately, that liability should go away. That's, that's the goal with the funding schedule that gets set up every couple of years. That liability did decrease about $500,000 from the prior year, and the main reason that it did, that it decreased was because the Hampshire County Retirement Systems' results of operations from their fiscal year, they had much better investment returns during the year, so overall, the entire liability went down, which means your share of that liability went down as well, was the main reason for, for that decrease there. Now, the line below that is your net OPEB liability, and at the end of fiscal year 2020, that was just over, almost about $11.5 million. That liability represents the town's share of your retiree health insurance costs, so your retirees and your current employees, you're required to pay health insurance benefits, and this is the liability that's calculated by the actuary. That liability increased $5 million from the year before, and that is not normal, and don't freak out too much about that. The town actually switched actuaries between 2019 and 2020. I had had conversations with the treasurer and the accountant in years past about the former actuary and the assumptions that were used by him in terms of calculating the liability, and part of the gray area in terms of the accounting standard from GASB was, you know, the actuaries kind of had a little leeway in terms of how they calculated the liability. One was not right, one was not wrong. Most actuaries calculated it the way your 2020 numbers are, your previous actuary did not. So his number was always lower, and I did mention that when you do switch, it's not going to be pretty. So if you look at the footnotes of the, just to talk about the liability, you can see kind of the big changes there. There's different assumptions used by each actuary which caused this giant increase. So this is really a better representation of what your actual liability was in previous years. In our minds, it was understated, but there was nothing really, I mean, there was nothing we could do or say about it, it's just how the actuary calculated it. So you shouldn't see an increase like that going forward. That was kind of a one-time thing, but if you're looking kind of in some of the schedules in the back and you see that large increase, that is the reason why. Does anyone have any questions on this page or those liabilities, or anything like that? Okay.
One thing on the net investment in capital assets?
Hmm?
At $21.9 million. So that's basically everything from our vehicle fleet to anything that's down.
Yep. Yep, so kind of the easiest way to look at that is your, your capital assets that you have minus any debt that's associated with those assets is really what that, what that number boils down to be. Yep. All right. Does anyone have any other questions on the financial statements themselves?
Go ahead.
I'm going to save mine to the end.
Okay. Oh, great, okay. All right, so now, in terms of the management letter, and again, we're looking, you guys are always looking forward, we're always looking back, but at this point, we're still, this is looking back at fiscal year 2020. The first comment in the management letter is to improve the controls over the cash and receivables. We did consider this issue to be a material weakness, which means that we felt that there was a deficiency in the town's internal control structure that would allow material misstatement to occur and go undetected. Because cash had not been reconciled between cash and receivables, had not been reconciled between the treasurer collector and the town accountant since the date of these financial statements, as of January of this year, you know, there's, there's a risk that something could happen or go on that wouldn't be detected. That doesn't mean that the treasurer was not reconciling her monthly bank statements to her internal, her, her internal records or reconciling the receivables internally in the collector's office. It just means that, you know, the town accountant was not there to perform that extra validation and review. So something could get missed, money could be taken from the bank account, like, there's no way to tell that, and, and it's, this is something, you know, these kind of reconciliations should be done monthly, but when you, you don't have a town accountant, it's, it's hard to do that, so. So that's a--
Chris, if I could?
Go ahead.
So just on that, I think you said it well, but for those listening at home, just to layman's terms.
Yep.
Our town treasurer would receive bank statements, tell me if I'm wrong, would receive bank statements. She would go through her process to ensure that she balanced or reconciled to the bank, but then she would take that work product and send it up to the accountant.
Yep.
And at that point, that's when the process stopped.
Right. So that, that did not happen. So she's doing her internal reconciliations, looking over her stuff, but no one else is there-- there checking it and validating and making sure that what, you know, if I'm the board of health and I'm turning over money to the treasurer, I also, you know, let the town accountant know that I've turned over money. There's no, you know, town accountant, so they're not checking to make sure that that turnover made into the bank and into the treasurer's records.
And statutorily, they're only required to do it annually on June 30th when they certify, when the treasurer certifies their cash turnover report, whatever that's called. But best practices, I hear you saying.
Monthly.
Should be monthly if, I was thinking quarterly, but you're recommending monthly.
Cash should be reconciled monthly.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, I mean, receivables.
I think what you're going to find is the series of my questions throughout the night are going to lead to a severe understaffing. And if we want to right the ship, then we need to recognize where resources need to be made.
Yeah.
And what I'm hearing is, yeah, MGL says you have to do it every June 30th, but best practices or efficiency to avoid risk and loss of funds would be to do it on a 30-day basis or month-end basis.
Right. And it's tough, once you get behind, to get caught up internally because you're always, you know, trying to look forward and do that, so it's hard to go back. But, once you do get caught up and reconciling monthly, you're only looking at 30 days as opposed to months or a year at a time and trying to pour through that documentation. So, you know.
Can I just clarify for the timeframe? I know this audit is FY '20. I believe I read that it was beginning with FY '21 until the present. Is that correct?
Right. So, part of our audit process, we're looking at the cash and receivable balances as of 6/30/20. We also look into, you know, a little bit into fiscal '21 just to look at some stuff. But, when we were working on wrapping up this audit last month, cash had still not been reconciled since 6/30/20 because the town accountant left. So, there's no one there to perform that responsibility.
Right, right.
So, from July 2021 through January 2022.
Yeah, that's what I thought, just making sure.
Yep.
But for the record, we did pay significant funds for somebody to occupy that office.
Right.
But the task was not accomplished.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the interim accountant that we had for, what was it, 12 hours a week?
Right.
How many hours a week?
24.
24.
24 hours a week, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
Was that much?
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. But they also had other, I'm assuming, responsibilities in terms of, you know, yeah. Okay. Comment number two had to do with kind of the timing of when some activity got recorded in the general ledger. And I won't go into too much detail about this, but generally speaking, if town meeting votes $300,000 for a project, as soon as that's voted, a new account should be established in the general ledger and a budget should be entered to track, you know, what's allowed to be spent and make sure you don't overexpend. So, there was a few issues that we found in fiscal 2020 where, you know, things were kind of recorded in multiple funds and/or budgets hadn't been entered at all. We didn't, ultimately, at the end of the day, we're looking to see if it got overexpendent and there was no over expenditure, but it was just a little sloppy and just needed to get cleaned up a little bit. So, you know, best practice is to kind of record those immediately and then they're in there and they don't need, you know, no worries in terms of tracking the expenses compared to budget. And then the last comment is really just kind of a long-term comment, which, you know, a bunch of our towns still are in the process of doing. It's a fairly big undertaking in terms of developing a risk assessment process and really looking at, you know, where the biggest risks in the town are, you know, in terms of cash receipts, payments, payroll, you know, those are kind of your major transaction cycles of the town, if you want to think of it that way. You have receipts coming in, your vendors' investments and your payroll are really where most stuff kind of happens. So just taking a look at those and figuring out, do you have the right segregation of duties, the right responsibilities for the people kind of in those roles, checks and balances, things along that line. You know, it's one thing to write a policy, it's another thing to actually make sure it's working and stuff like that. So it is, it is an undertaking, it's a long-term process. I know we have some other communities that have kind of worked with their insurance companies, I think, a little bit on at least the accounts payable portion of that to kind of help out with taking a look at things, but it's, you know, kind of a long-term goal and something that should be looked at. I mean, you're, if you think of yourself as a business, you're a fairly large business and just making sure you have the right controls and checks and balances place is important, so.
Okay. So those are the three.
That's it.
Main things of the management letter.
Right, right.
All right. Questions while we have it? John, more questions? Oh, no?
You want me to start?
Can I just have?
Well, I want to make sure that Tony's finished with what you've been doing.
I just have one quick question. I'm still hung up on this OPEB liability.
Okay.
You know, because I know that we have rotating boards and employees and that sort of thing, and down the road, it's going to be, you know, this question, why did the liability increase such a substantial amount in one year? Is there any way that this negatively impacts us now or in the next couple of years in terms of any, anything?
No, I don't think so. I mean, there's no requirement to fund liability at this time.
Okay.
You know, bond rating agencies and stuff will look at these, the statements. You could explain to them. They also, you know, are very versed in looking at these kind of statements and looking at the supporting documentation, so they could always reach out to us as the auditors or the actuary to, if they needed more of an in-depth explanation, but I don't think it is really anything to be overly concerned about. I just want to point it out because it was a big jump, yeah.
Can I just ask a follow-up on that one?
Yep.
So, that liability extends over what period of time going forward? I know it's future.
Yes, your actuary is predicting that out based on your current retirees and your current employees. So, you know, how long that they're working, they have all these mortality tables and things like that. So it's, I mean, it's as of 6/30/20, with the people you have employed and the retirees, you have what that cost would be going forward.
Okay.
Through when those people, you know, all pass away, essentially.
Their normal working age, retirement.
Right. Yep, yep. All those assumptions are calculated by the actuary and, yep.
Yeah. Anymore, Francie? I think that's right.
No.
Anything else you'd like to present or we'll just open up for questions?
No.
Okay. John, go ahead. Have you had a question?
I don't need to go first, does somebody else though? I said I don't need to go first, but.
You sound like you, yeah, George, anything?
No, I don't have any questions, no.
Well, go ahead.
So just building on the pension liability there. So it's 6.4 for the town and $231,000 for the two enterprise accounts.
Mm-hmm.
Which in reality is probably just the water enterprise account since the transfer station is a part-time employee. We don't need to talk about pension obligation bonds tonight, but on the enterprise.
Yeah.
If I'm reading page 12 correctly, the business-type activities, which I believe is strictly the water accounts, their water enterprise and transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
Ended the year with a little over $3 million in cash.
No, yes, yes.
Right. But their unfunded liabilities are $334,000, round numbers, if I add those two lines, the pension and the OPEB.
Oh, for pension and OPEB? Yeah, I mean, they have other.
But just on those two particular pieces.
Yeah.
Right? So, they've got $3 million in cash, which I would argue is more later on, but just that $3 million, and they're getting 10 basis points on how that money's being invested currently, but they're being charged 7 1/4 for their pension liability. So, would it make prudent sense just to free up the cash and pay off their bill? Right? I mean, you're sitting on cash making 10 basis points and your liability is being charged, your retirement liability is being charged 7.15%. One could possibly make that argument.
You can make that argument.
And the question.
Yeah.
I guess my question, I'd say, is wouldn't it make sense not to co-mingle those funds with the operating fund? Because if I look at the cash report that was filed as Schedule 8 Part 9 for fiscal year 2020, it shows that the enterprise funds that were certified by our town treasurer had $2.7 million in cash. So, I'm assuming there's a reconciliation going on here. So it seems like they have their money, but it also seems like the money is sitting in our operating account and possibly being used for day-to-day bills. Wouldn't you break out the enterprise account and not rely on that for your operating fund?
In terms of a separate bank statement?
Or, you're right, separate investment policies and, I mean, if I was the water commissioner in this town, $3,000 on a little over $3 million in interest, I'd be raising the question.
That's true, but you have to keep in mind that they had a $1.5 million note payable at the end of the year, which they probably got in in June, and they probably didn't, might not have spent that all.
Right.
I'd have to look at the numbers on that, but that could be.
But even if they had a million in cash.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, sitting in a money market account at DCAM Savings Bank.
Yeah.
It's probably not the prudent thing to do.
That's true, and that's definitely a town decision.
It is. And I think, and I don't want to speak for our town treasurer who's elected independently and can speak for herself, but I think the fact that right now it's a two-person office is the amount of work that actually needs to be done by that office cannot be done by the two people that are there, cannot be done by the three people that are there, and I may get disagreements on that, but it's costing the town money by not investing in the staff to be able to utilize these things. So, my other question is, I had asked to have a list of all proposed account audit journal entries prior to tonight's meeting. I don't know if that request made it to you or not, but I don't see any here, so I'm assuming there wasn't a single audit journal entry made.
Oh, no, there were.
Right.
Yeah, no, and I don't, did we upload? I'd have to look. Typically, we upload them to the town's share file account, the online SCIR portal, the trial balances as well as the audit adjustments. I don't know who would have gotten that email that said we did that, because I believe your town accountant was new at the time. I can certainly send those to you. There were audit adjustments. Couple of things that got booked kind of in the wrong funds that I had to work through and deal with. Not a ton of correcting entries. A lot of the adjustments were kind of year-ended things that we need to book as part of our audit process, but there were definitely some things that kind of related to debt, capital projects, CPA funds. You had some confusing, and part of that resulted in the management letter with things being double-booked. There was some moving of things around, so I can certainly send that, send those to you if you want.
If you could send it either through Chris or to the entire board.
Sure.
I think that would be great.
Yeah.
And from my point of view, sitting on this side of the table and not be involved in the day-to-day and barred from being involved in the day-to-day processes, I think it's important to see that to create a baseline. So next year, when we look at the audit journal entries, understand there's a lot going on right now and changeover, but there should be a steady decrease to what is an acceptable number of journal entries.
Right.
In there, so that would be great if you could.
Okay, sure. I can do that.
Took care of that one. On page eight of the report, which is titled, under government activities, it notes a def, what I, tell me if I'm wrong, an overall deficit of $440,000, of which $54,000 is related to the general fund, and you reference Schedule D, which I think is on the next page at the bottom.
Oh, I thought it was Schedule D, yeah. Yeah, this, yeah.
Is Schedule D.
Yeah.
The one line that sticks out to me, and I just want to make sure I understand this, is budgetary appropriations unspent by departments, $294,000. So is that money they were allocated that they just didn't use?
Yeah, that they got turned back.
That ultimately would come back as part of the free cash calculation.
Yep.
Do you, without having your notes, do you think that's a typical number?
Well, let me just take a look. Oh, for you guys? I think it was higher than it normally is, actually, because of COVID and things shutting down kind of at the end of the fiscal year. I think there was some additional turnbacks, especially in the education, that was $100,000 of that, which they don't usually turn back really much of anything.
No.
I don't recall. And there was about $100,000 in public works. And then, you know, various other departments. So that's probably on par, if not a little bit higher.
Okay. Because from my point, being new on this side and we're about to enter the budget, if it's typical to have $300,000 of fat.
Turnbacks, yeah.
So to speak, within the budget, then we might, I might be looking to have a stronger scalpel during the budget.
You might appropriate it differently in the process.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I don't get done, on page 35, I'm sorry if I'm jumping around.
No, it's fine.
35, it's number six, user fee receivables.
Yes.
Again, we, under ambulance, we had an outstanding AR of $156,000, but an allowance of delinquent accounts or bad debt of $115. That tells me that we accepted a 73.8% delinquency rate?
Yep.
Is that normal?
Well, so, for audit purposes, we book an allowance and it's approved by the treasurer of anything over 90 days. It's assumed to be uncollectible. I mean, once you get past 90 days in ambulance, there's a very little chance it's actually going to be collected. You know, there are write-offs that kind of happen every year with, and it's across the board in terms of all the towns we audit who have ambulance funds, there are pretty large write-offs. I don't know the exact percentage of the amount collected off the top of my head, but the town probably did not do any big write-offs at the end of 2020, considering everything shut down. That is a process that usually happens at the end of the fiscal year. They work with your ambulance company and write those off or like send them to a third-party collections agency, but essentially write those off.
Just to clarify again for those at home.
Yeah.
Right? So, we provide a service and hypothetically, we charge $1,000, let's keep it simple, we charge $300 for it, or $400, so I can do the math of my head. We charge $400 for it with the understanding that we're going to write off $320 of that. So now, we're really trying to provide the service for $80. Like, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, layman's terms, yeah.
So, to the extent that you know, under the ARPA funds and loss of revenue, would this potentially qualify if historically our write-offs were significantly less than 73%? So we can show a pattern?
So you can show a pattern from year to year? I don't know. I'd have to look at that because that, you do not, so you're, the way you record your revenue in your ambulance fund and really in your general ledger is it all gets deferred until you collect it. So, you have, as soon as you collect the revenue, it goes into cash and goes into revenue. Your receivables are offset by deferred revenue, so it's an asset and a liability. And if you write that off, it just reduces those two amounts. I'm not sure that they're going to let you factor that in to the analysis when you're just looking at revenue one year to revenue the next, because that's actually a cash basis, and that's really how you're recording it in your general ledger. So, I think you'd have a hard time arguing that, just because it's not revenue to actually collect it.
All right. And then again, just coming from a for-profit organization.
Right, where you would accrue.
73% acceptable loss is not maintainable over a long period of time.
Right.
Right, okay.
Did you see evidence where this was reconciled on a regular basis?
Your ambulance?
Right.
Yeah, we did test that this year and it was reconciled, and that has been a comment in years past in terms of reconciling that receivable. There was years where, you know, it just kind of got adjusted at year-end to agree to the external records. We've worked with the ambulance department over the years in terms of reconciling their runs, in terms of what they send out to be billed versus the reports they get back that are actually being billed. They do have a process for that. Obviously, we were looking at 6/30/20, so I can't speak to anything after that. But it was reconciled and, you know, in the general ledger and stuff like that, so.
And then my last question is kind of open-ended. And I understand your comments about the town accountant's office and during this period of time being open, but from an outsider's point of view who has a history of auditing the town of Southampton, to the extent that you want to comment, do you feel that the current financial departments are adequately staffed, understaffed, or overstaffed? Or no comment?
I don't know, off the top of my head, who is, do you have one accounting person in the office right now?
And a part-time assistant.
One and a half?
But we went good stretch with, you know, without, it would be the position. Now we have a assistant and a town full.
We're back to pre-2020.
Okay, okay. Which is good if everything's caught up and you're you're just dealing with the day-to-day basis. Right now, you know, obviously, that's not the case, so getting caught up is is a huge undertaking. I know we've had discussions about that and trying to get additional help in here, which I think would be well-spent money, because, you know, once you get behind, you're never going to catch up. So, that being said, if that does happen, and you have a full-time person and an assistant, I think from the accounting perspective, it should be reasonable. I mean, your, your, your school's kind of separate, you know, you're not processing their stuff in great detail. The treasurer collector's office, you have treasurer collector and then two?
Two, but there's a vacancy.
Assistant and a clerk.
Assistant and an admin.
Admin, clerk.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's tight. It doesn't give her a whole lot of opportunity to, you know, be proactive in terms of doing things. I'm guessing that she's probably pretty busy all the time in terms of trying to stay caught up, so.
That coupled with the four-day work week, possibly.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Right, right, that is tough, yeah.
Then my my PS, really last question, is if you were on this side of the table, what question should I ask you that I haven't asked you?
God, I feel like I'm in an interview now. So I didn't prepare for that one.
Is there anything we should know?
Yeah, something we're.
That you wish we had asked you?
That we didn't ask, right?
That we're missing here.
I, you know, I don't think so. I mean, ultimately, you know, I've just, I've seen it before where cities and towns get behind in terms of of the day-to-day activities, and it's hard to get out of, so I would just, just really strongly recommend putting time and effort into getting caught up, because it can go downhill really fast. And, you know, that's part of the reason the 20 audit was delayed. I mean, every single one of our 2020 audits was delayed thanks to the pandemic and stuff like that, so everything was behind to begin with, but, you know, it was just, the 20 audit was was tough this year. It was really hard getting information. We tried to work remotely. That bombed, that didn't work as well as I hoped it was going to in terms of trying to get information, you know, read-only from the system and stuff like that, so I would just, I would just put some serious thought and resources towards that, getting caught up, and and it'll be less stressful, I think, for everyone at the end of the day, so.
I just want to follow up on a comment John made. It had to do with the enterprise fund, but I think in, you know, I think the bigger picture is about investment income. And I know that when I was just starting on the board several years ago, a previous select board, previous select board member had said to me, "Don't forget interest income." And so I just wanted to just ask your general question about that. I agree, I think that, I think enterprise should be separate. I think it does seem a little bit intermingled unnecessarily. But I also think in terms of, we have a cost efficiency committee right now that just formed to look at ways that we can, you know, do things better and maximize finances. And I'm just wondering whether or not, right now, do the decisions that are made around investment, I'm looking at CDs, I'm looking at government bonds and all that kind of stuff, I'm just wondering, does that primarily rest with the treasurer and town administrator? These decisions, or are there standards or guidance? Because I agree, putting money in a money market account right now at the local bank on the numbers that the water department is having is just completely not a good use of.
We do have a, do we not have a written investment policy, though?
We do.
We do.
And you've got to be careful with, you know.
We're limited to what we can.
Governmental funds, you can only invest in certain things.
We're limited to what we can invest in.
Go buy Bitcoins or anything like that.
Well, I mean, right now, you can use the legalist. The town could adopt the prudent person investment, which 90% of all the other communities have done, Southampton has not.
Yep.
And I can tell you that the, you know, I will abstain from any votes on this because this is my day job, but I can tell you the town currently uses a vendor, it's public record, they use Commonwealth, and they're getting 2.9%, where all the other surrounding communities are getting better, but they've adopted the prudent person, which is a different model. We have mortgage-backed securities in our portfolio right now. Why is the town investing in that? I would argue that our treasurer, who is very competent, just does not, this is not a priority, which is fine, because I believe she doesn't have the resources to address it. And to your question, which I don't know if you're about the answer, but I believe it strictly lies with the treasurer, as the investment short of a policy being adopted. And the fact that we have an elected official as treasurer even gets it more out of our hands.
Could we get a copy of that investment policy?
Sure.
I'd love to read it, yeah.
It's pretty standard. But yeah, I mean, obviously, there's a balance there in terms of investing and tying up funds that you can't access if you needed, if you needed them, so liquidity and stuff like that, but that's all part of, you write that into the policy itself. But yeah, but yeah, I mean, it's certainly, certainly, you know, the town could pursue those options. I agree, I don't think your treasurer has the capacity to, you know, take that on right now, you know, but.
Other questions, really? Anything else?
That's been very helpful, thank you. I guess I want to understand how we fare vis-à-vis other other towns in this, in this same situation. I mean, you said that there were lots of towns, everything, the audits were put off. How many audits, 2020 audits are you doing? And the position that you're finding us in, is that similar or different from other towns?
I have one 2020 audit left to complete, and it's because there's a legal issue that is pending. So that one, we had started way back in the day, but we can't, we can't finish, so. So this is abnormally late for a 2020 audit. We've already wrapped up 2021 audits. You know, we've consistently done the town's audit a little bit later in the year because, you know, you don't have federal funding, you don't need to meet the March 31st federal grant audit deadlines, and, you know, every single town I audit is a 630-year end, so there's only so many weeks in the months of September, October, November, December, although I wish they were eight weeks long each. So, you know, consistently, it's been kind of a, an April start date and trying to get that wrapped up before June 30th to get to the financial advisor and stuff like that, but, but everything got delayed. This one, you know, got delayed even more because, you know, we're trying to ask questions of people who weren't directly involved in the process during the year we're trying to audit, so they don't 100% know the answers, so we're all trying to figure it out as we go along and get what we need. It's not that people weren't helpful, it's just that half the time, they don't know where to look or what to look for, and, you know, we're trying to do all this remotely, so it just, it was a perfect storm of of delays there, so. And then, you know, I can't push off an audit that's completely ready to be done and jump right back into this one immediately, the second I get any information, so it's ultimately, yeah, it's a, yeah.
And just kind of looking forward, with, I guess, the CARES money and now the ARPA money coming our way, what does that mean in terms of federal requirements and auditing?
It kind of depends how much you guys spent in fiscal funds. Did we talk about this at some point?
We did.
Okay, I'm like, maybe I'm forgetting. I don't think you were over the $750,000 threshold for fiscal 2021.
Yeah.
In terms of federal expenditures. Whether that might be an issue for 2022, I don't know. It kind of depends how fast you you spend some of the ARPA money, if you had any CDVG money, you know, stuff like that, so it's, it's, it depends what you have kind of going on and when you spend it. It's when you spend it, it's not when you receive it, because everyone got a chunk of ARPA money, but that just kind of sits there and does not, we don't look at it per se, because you're not spending it, so it's not considered federal expenditures at that point, so.
Yeah, 22 might be a possibility.
Yeah.
I think 23 definitely will be a federal audit requirement.
Yeah.
Good. Well, if nothing else, we really thank you for your time. This is extremely helpful.
Yeah, no, no problem.
It was great, great to go through this and help us understand it better, and thank you so much for your time. Really, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks so much for coming in, Tanya.
And I'll send those journal entries. No problem, all right, I didn't take anyone else's stuff.
Okay, well, with that, we'll get back to our other reports, and our first one up will be the community preservation committee. So Virginia, please. I'll have you probably lower that mic a little bit, Virginia, just.
I'm just not as tall as some of the others.
It's a little bit better there, yeah, thank you.
Now, I sent you a nice little.
Yes.
Thing. But you know, I'm not going to go right down and go point by point or read it. We'll start out with, let me see, we'll start out pretty normally. The three areas that we have funds for, of course, are the historical preservation, the open space/recreation, and the housing. And this year, we finally begun to get, some things are beginning to happen there. And that, that's good, because, you know, we've got, compared to the rest of the world, we've got a lot of money in there, because we can, we don't have to spend all our money in one year or give it back. So for 20-some years now, 20, be about 21, we've had housing funds coming in that haven't been used. So that is one thing. The open space/recreation, the funds are really meant for acquisition of open space. It isn't, we aren't supposed to be putting money into develop or this sort of thing. Recreation, maybe, but not, you know, into the actual, we're supposed to be acquiring open space. And I was thinking tonight, as I heard the people from the, over by the waterways, that water is one of the very, very important things that comes up in our guidelines. I don't know if, how that, I don't know in any way whether that would play out, because it wouldn't be doing, you know, cleaning the water or sewer, or getting sewers or things like that, but I'll have to think about that and look a little bit more at that, because acquiring land along the brooks, ponds, is one of the things that spelled right out. The recreation, of course, is the active things that people actively do, walk, walking paths, that kind of thing. Mention a few things we need to be on top of, and I think probably most of you knew that the housing authority had those two wonderful workshops, that they had to get the feel of the town, and hopefully that we'll get some guidance and things as we go along, but we're kind of waiting now for a proposal in that area. Now, let me see. Open space has been very busy, keeping us busy, and partly because we have such a wonderful grant committee, and they keep getting grants to do things that fall, you know, into some of these properties, such as the park grant. And they're going to be working on that, and ideas, thoughts, and all, need to be given to them by the townspeople, so, because that's not, it's not a clear cut where any of those things are going to be yet within the park. Excuse me. We're kind of seeing a few things wrapping up. I know the Historical Society is very hopeful that they'll be able to have meetings in the Clark Chapman House, and by the fall at least, and get everything back in. Historical preservation means so many, many things. The library is working on the paper goods that they have, getting them online, the way museums and libraries, much bigger ones, do. So when you're using the documents, if you went in, you wouldn't be picking up the document itself and getting oil and things from your fingers on the paper, which damaged that, and they're working away at that. They must, they did not ask for additional funds, or they haven't yet, to help finish that. It includes the cemetery, and I just want to take a moment to say, we had a person here in town who for, I don't know how many years, every year had a article to buy veterans' grave markers. He got them all done. But we really have an awful lot to remember Dick Frary and all the work he did, getting the cemetery up to speed with our veterans. And then, of course, as you know, they also worked on the plaques out here, and we have veterans buried in this town who go back to have been in the king's army, or militia, or whatever you wanted to call it, of King George III. That's how old some of the graves are. And the cemetery commission as a whole has worked very hard on the cemeteries. Okay.
Mentioned the historical commission here as well. You mentioned the historical commission as well?
Yeah, they, they have been working. This last one is kind of exciting that we just paid, just had the article come up at the town meeting to do some things with the historical. Now, we were one of the very few lucky towns in the state that got 100% grant in November. The amount was, I wrote it down someplace, but I can't see it. We, our surcharge here in town is what it's based on, and it was 258,900 and something, and we got a complete match of that in November. Well, the news comes out in the paper that there's more money in the fund, and they're going to give more rounds. You can only have 100%. So we didn't get any more funding, but then we got 100% before a lot of people, and not everyone got 100% anyway. Part of the, this has been because they moved the deed fee, which had always been $25 on transfer of a deed, they moved that up to $50 after. transfer of a deed, they moved that up to $50 after 20 years. Everything else had gone out, but that hadn't. So, anyway. What are a few problems? I mentioned here that our people come from seven committees, commissions, boards, and they, some of you have many more, there's always been someone from the select board, and you've got more than that number. So it's, sometimes it's hard to get a quorum. And that's one of our little problems. I didn't put the other one in, I just thought about it today, because community preservation has been around for so long, and we have tried to educate people about it. Many people still think that we've got all this money, some people think we're hoarding it and doing nothing with it, and some people think it can be spent for anything. And we have very strict guidelines from the state on what we can do. If I'm not sure, I get in touch with the Community Preservation Coalition, and then I get results of what they feel from some of the more learned people. So that is, you know, another thing. I get, we, people say, well, you can do this, can't you? And no. And then they say, well, you got that money. Yeah, I'd like to just kind of request, not just for those of you here, but the ones who are listening and watching, that we need input. When we have a project that is coming up, that's being worked on, such as how we respond to this, the park grant, the more suggestions and ideas about how Conant Park needs to really look and where we need to have things, from the people in the town, the better the park commission can make their final decisions on that. And they have about a six-month, it's not six months now, but six months period to work on the aspects of where, includes a splash pad, where do you want that? It's got walking trails for seniors, that part was for the senior citizens, it's close to the, their room here. And they meet, and they can go for a walk, and there's, they had a big walking crew at one time. Where would they, where would they see in the park that they would like more good, comfortable walking trails? So when something comes up, and again, the housing, keep your eye on that, put suggestions in, so that you'll have an idea and you'll have your say on it, more than just voting at town meeting.
Very good.
So, I don't know, I guess that's about all I
Okay.
need to say.
Good, thank you, Virginia.
I did happen to, this is a few little, I'll just give you a few little things that are, just came out recently at the Coalition. We are now, there are now 178 community preservation communities. And it includes big cities now, too. Boston, Springfield, Holyoke. And they have put into the, into the state of Massachusetts, 265 billion dollars. There are 32,566 acres of land that have been preserved permanently. 3,000 new recreation spots. 8,700 housing units have been created. And 6,300 real large historic preservation projects.
Great.
So, that's a little bit about the whole program, and, and then with what we've done, does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you, Virginia, I think that's great. So I think we've got a very active CPA, CPC program, and thank you for your leadership on that and keeping us all informed. And I know there's always applications that are able to come your way. So people that have ideas, the application is on the town website, I believe.
And you can find project, the thing to fill out for a project is on the website for the town.
Yep, good.
It's not hard, we don't ask you to
If I could just follow up from, the last time you were here, I asked a question, I know you answered this by email, but for those at home that didn't get the email.
Yeah, I can
Do you know where I'm going?
Well, the one about the, yeah.
The exemption?
Exemption, yes, I did. I did a little research, and also.
So the question last time was, we adopted, we adopted, adopted, voted to approve the CPA surcharge at 3% with $100,000 exemption, back when it first started. The question was, can we continue with the 3%, but raise $100,000 exemption to benefit, you know, the cost of living and how homes have gone up?
Well, homes are more expensive, and, well, you weren't the first one to have, to ask and have someone check into it. They've had a lot of questions. It has to be done, of course, because the act was voted on by the state legislature, and we adopted it. They will have to make the change, but there were a number apparently, and are continuing to be numbers, that are asking that question.
So under the local authority, we don't have the ability to do it, but we should perhaps start pursuing it with our local representative?
Yeah, we can't do it here.
Because it has to be done through
It has to be done. The thing that amazed me, however, is that of these number of cities and towns, one quarter of them don't give any exemption at all. And also, I discovered that there were a number who give an exemption, but you have to go in and prove you have low income. I just, I don't like that. That's just my personal opinion. Going in and trying to prove to your city or town that you're, you need that. So that's, they are thinking about doing us, getting study, and the Coalition is a lobbies group, who, they're thinking about going in and asking, as we did, as they did with the Greenway, the rail banking, whatever you want to call it, because they had said we couldn't do that kind of a project. And they had got it into the legislature, and I think it sat in committee for three years.
Well, I think it's up to us when we start to meet with our new rep, that's going to be our, our new rep from Westfield, Kelly Pease, you know, when we have him in, for example, and even Senator Ellis, I mean, that would be our, our chance to put some lobbying, or put a buzz in their ear, so.
Yeah.
We'll keep that in mind. So thank you, Virginia, I appreciate your coming. We've got a few other reports, so I'd like to kind of wrap up, if that's okay.
I just want to say that there's still a lot of confusion, I think, about CPA funds, based on what I read on social media. So I think the more we can educate people about, you know, that can't be used for that, you know, when people suggest, well, why don't we do one thing or another? So I think the big pluses are that we can now use CPA funds for Greenway, that the state has given us 100% match. And just a reminder that a couple of years ago, we did have a citizen petition to reduce the percentage on the surcharge, and it did not pass. So I think the more we all can do to educate the public about what the CPA funds can be used for would be helpful, because I think there's still a lot of confusion.
Yeah, very good.
And I don't, I hate to say this, I know people say, well, you, it was on NASLIVE or something like that. I don't, I just don't do those.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, good.
But if we can get the word out, oh, excuse me, get the word out there, so.
Great, thanks, Virginia.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate coming, all right. All right, I'm going to jump over because Cindy's been sitting here, so I'm going to go to the Open Space Committee next, and we'll come back to Conservation Commission, because I assume we'll just be reading a report for CONCOM, because I don't see anybody here.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, and I'm the chairperson of the Open Space Committee. And I'm, first of all, thank you very much, because it's great to follow Virginia with some of the positive comments there. The Open Space Committee is an ongoing, involved process to achieve that, the mandate that the Select Board gave us, which is to maintain an understanding of what the needs are of the town related to open space, related to conservation, and think about the long-term benefits to the town and our residents. We don't always know when things are going to come before us. In the recent months, we did have an opportunity to at least deliberate around the fact that there was a parcel that was coming out of Chapter 61, and what was our opinion on that? It was ultimately a Select Board opinion, but we did have an opportunity to consider all the options there, and the Select Board made the decision, and I think you waived the right of first refusal on that. The really exciting thing that's happened in recent months has to do with the acquisition of 80-plus acres on the, over the north end of this town, over the north branch of Manhattan River. And that's a really exciting parcel off Palm Run Meadow Road. The Open Space Committee is just kind of in the periphery of all that. It's primarily going to be a grant from the Water Commissioners, and I know Ed's on board with that whole thing. And the owners of this property, it's all, they've come forward publicly to say that they're really excited to see this conservation, it's the Courtney family. They are very eager to see this as conservation land. They had been approached by developers to talk about what they could do with the land, and their, their choice was to see this conserved. And they went directly to Kestrel Land Trust, and Kestrel's been, their person, at Kestrel's been maintaining contact with me and also the Water Commissioners, it's part of this. We're going to, it's a process that's going on, they'll be, they'll be the primary writers for the drinking water supply protection grant. And yes, we will have to go to CPC to ask for the town portion of the match. So that's pretty exciting, given the funding that we know is available through the open space pot of money through this CPC. And we hope to see that soon, I think, for this next town meeting, but it's, again, all of a process. Very critical land for conserving, because it goes directly over the Barnes Aquifer, and it really is considered by our Water Commissioners to be a major source of protection of our drinking water supply. And so I know that probably Ed is going to facilitate a letter from the Select Board to support that grant at some point, that'll come up. I want to add one thing about that property. Last year, the Open Space Committee, and it's, it was really the sphere headed by one member, and I'm going to credit him right here, and that's Charlie McDonald, he said, what we really need to do is educate the town about the value of protecting our drinking water. And so he was 100% behind having a flyer go out to every household in town, it was really beautiful, it was colorful, and it, again, CPC money was used for the production of that, as well as the mailing of that. And the Courtney family specifically stated that they saved it, they thought that was valuable, and when they came to think, what we're going to do with our land, they thought that had a great deal to do with it. So there was a link there. It's all very important to consider all of those things. Currently, we're also working on a development of a monarch-friendly pollinator garden with pavers and benches on the currently conserved land on Palm Run Meadow Road, closer down to the school, which is Water Commission Protection Land. And that's all in process, and Charlie's led that one, too, and he's had to do, he's worked with the Highway Superintendent, the Water Commissioners, and also because the conservation restriction is held by Kestrel Land Trust, they also could speak on that, and they also approved it. So that's going to be helpful, and it's also, if anybody has walked down Palm Run Meadow Road, which I happen to live quite close to, nice sidewalks there, it's a place where benches can be, and that's important. And I finally, I put a final bullet point there, that I have maintained a contact, close contact with Kestrel Land Trust, they're very valuable to us, because that's, they're professionals in terms of conservation. And I think I told you in the last report that it was planned that we were going to do a tour of the town with their executive director and a couple of their conservation managers, and I picked the most glorious autumn day to go out, and we did, we did tour the town, and we also did some climbing up to the top of Palm Run Mountain. Currently, we are ongoing trying to maintain relationships and develop further relationships with people who own large parcels in our town that are consistent with the guidelines that we have for what should be conserved. Lands that's perhaps water protection, or next to other conservation lands, or other lands that are not conservation lands but are protected in some other way. And it's an ongoing process. I will say that we, the last two years, we got funding through a neighborhood outreach grant, which is another state fund, and we unfortunately missed, missed out on it this year, because, you know, there's a, not, an unending amount of money, and I didn't get in fast enough to see if we could get some for this year. But we'll work on it in the future. But in the meantime, there could be other things we can do to maintain contact with the landowners. I feel it's extremely important that we continue a really strong relationship with all boards and committees in our town, which include the Select Board, Conservation Commission, we do have a 501(c)(3) organization in our town, the Friends of Southampton Open Space, that is, despite the pandemic, really starting to build and do some things, and I'm, hopefully they'll, you'll see things coming out of that group going forward. And also, I added, developed further strategies to achieve the defined open space mission, and that's where input is required. Input, ideas, people listening from, at home, that have ideas on ways that we can continue to educate people, continue to connect with other landowners. I'll be attending the Mass Open Space Conference, which is actually 100% online, going this month, every Thursday, to get other ideas of how other towns and communities are moving towards conservation of open space. But, you know, our door is open to understand these things. We have our public meetings approximately once a month, and we, a lot of ideas come forward at that, and a lot of discussion about ways that we can move, move forward on the charge. We have no funding, we have no staff. Monies that might be needed for certain projects would, might be through CPC, or that's, or grants, if we can, you know, if that's related. Time, printing, and postage are all donated, postage, you know? I am going to put in a request for consideration for the budget, it didn't pass this recent year because of, you know, I guess it was related to the override and it didn't work. But that is, we have no money at all. Our personnel are all volunteers. I will say the Town Administrator's Office has been really helpful setting up Zoom meetings and certainly answering questions. But that's, that's it, in terms of staffing, there is none. I do think it's a critical, important committee. It's a, it's a committee of appointees, we do have one at large position, but that means everybody's coming from another committee. We do have one at-large position, but that means everybody's coming from another committee that's already quite busy. And so, I'm kind of thinking long-range, what might propose to this, to the Select Board, about whether we can restructure this committee a little bit and get more at-large members that aren't tied up with other boards and committees as well. You know, just thoughts that I have. Every year, we put together a list of goals for that year. Unfortunately, the timing of this presentation is wrong, because we're going to talk about the goals for 2022 at our next Open Space Committee meeting. So, I don't have all our specific goals. I have some ideas, but it'll be along the lines of developing for better communications and doing activities that are visible for the town and the community. Because I do believe the vast majority of people in this town really are on board for seeing us protect our natural resources, our, our lands of ecological value, and, and water, water resources, et cetera. And finally, if I had something to say long-range, I, I think our town needs a conservation agent. I think a conservation agent would be, and I'm probably speaking to the choir here, somebody that can help support the whole concept of conservation in our town in a professional capacity. That's not specifically open space, but just, I, I just think that would be really important. This is, this is a critical thing. I know you have so many things to think about, you, the town of Southampton, but we, we really need to be getting back on board on that sort of thing. That's my report.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any plus or questions?
No.
I think this, this proposition with Kestrel and, and the property on Palmroy Meadow is just exciting. I think that's great. It's beautiful property as you drive through. And it's very, very nice that the Courtney family has decided that that's how they would like to see it be for the future.
And they also want to make sure it's available for the town to perhaps walk through, et cetera. So, I think that's all in process right now. And that's, yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I know in your report, you mentioned this, but I was just wondering, the Friends of Open Space is a separate 501(c)(3) organization that people can donate to, correct?
Yeah. They have a website, F-O-S-O-S, F-O-S-O-S.org. You can go on their website. I haven't looked at it recently, but, you know, there is an opportunity for making a tax deductible donation to them. And they had a meeting last week about some, some thoughts and projects they hope to be getting into. So, it is not a town committee.
Right. Right. Great. Very good.
Thank you.
I want to brag a little bit about Southampton. I don't know where...
Come on up here, Brad.
I don't, I don't know where we are right now. But at one time, and remember, we're not a big entity, if you look at a lot of the cities and towns and all. But we were 10th in the state with the amount of acreage that we have preserved. I, I think that's, you know, for, for a town the size of this, and one that's growing as we are, to be able to preserve and get that kind of state recognition.
That's great. Very good. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Cindy, for coming in. Appreciate that. All right. So, the next one is the Conservation Commission. We do have a written report. Would somebody like to read that? Ed, would you want to go through it?
Sure.
Or summarize it, or whatever you'd like to do, I guess.
Quarterly Report, October, November, December 2021, January 2022. Current priorities activities. As permits are requested of us, we arrange site visits, hold public hearings, and issue the signed paperwork to the applicants and Mass DEP. During the last four months, we received three certificates of compliance, one notice of intent, one extended order of conditions, and one amended order of conditions. We also went on eight site visits. A crew from the Student Conservation Association cleared a pathway that we named Great Mountain Trail on our Palmroy Mountain property. But lack of public parking space remains an open issue. We received the $70,000 from the Attorney General's Office for the solar enforcement case, and have submitted a plan for work related to protection of the Manhattan River's watershed. Much time has been spent trying to get additional specifications for the Manhattan Meadows Sanctuary project. We ask that the community be reminded that the Manhattan Meadows Sanctuary is closed to the public due to dangerous trail conditions, and the suspension bridge across the Manhattan River is not safe to cross. Theodore Hendrick and Paula Hendrick, General C., donated a parcel of land of historical and environmental significance to the town at 57. I think something's missing there.
57 Ledma.
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 Thank you. We thank the Highway Department for the replacement of a signpost at the Wolf Hill Sanctuary, and the installation of a kiosk at the East Street trailhead of the Manhattan Meadows Sanctuary. Budget spending status concerns. Our account balances from fiscal year '21 remain unknown to us. We continue to request a meeting between the town accountant and, and/or an auditor and the Conservation Commission's treasurer, Art Lawrence, to reconcile the Conservation Commission's entries with the towns. We anticipate spending a substantial amount of funds for trail projects this year, and the accounts must be accurate for reimbursement from the state for the RTP grants. Personal staffing updates, not applicable. Plans, events for the next four to six months. Work should begin on the restoration of the Manhattan Meadows Sanctuary trails and replacement of the bridge crossing the Manhattan River. Contracts for these projects must be put out to bid and signed. We are putting together the notice of intent for the projects. Forestry work should begin at the Alice Brown Conservation Area when it dries out. Quotes for the execution of the plans for the watershed protection project must be sought and the work started to remove invasive plants and damaged culverts. Depending upon outcome of review by NHESP, the time of year might be a factor in the work schedule. Long-term issues for Select Board consideration planning. Southampton should have a conservation agent. Much work has been done in 2017 to hire an agent. The need has increased with more development pressure and conserve land to manage. The people at, in the DEP Springfield Office with whom we had been working for years are no longer there as a resource. Suggested tools, resources to help do your job more efficiently or cost-effectively. Having update access to the Conservation Commission's webpage would be more efficient to upload and download files and change text on our page as needed.
Very good. Thanks. And I'll just add one thing on that, on the, the last comment. In terms of the possible changes on the webpage, that's something that I think is on our radar screen, and we're hoping that we will be able to do that with a website redesign, both an update and redesign. But the goal would be to have the various departments be able to manage their own pages. That is something that I know the Tech Committee is already looking at as well. I think reconciling balances, we've talked about that. We've got to get through the finalization of the FY '21 funds, which we have a consultant working on right now. And as soon as that is done, they will be able to have a, an ending and a starting balance, that they should be able to meet with Art and sit down and look at all these different funds. Because I know you've got three or four different funds at least to manage there at ConCom. Okay?
If I could just comment on that. I mean, it just seems like sometimes a squeaky wheel is just a squeaky wheel. We, we now have audited financials of 2020, which gives ending balances, whether there's one account or 15 accounts. I don't think it's unreasonable to have our town accountant run a status of accounts of anything that posted to the account over that 365-day period, and provide them to the ConCom's treasurer. They don't need to meet. Here's what's in the system. You mark it up, forward it over. We'll continue to work at it. But to continue to hear, we continue to request a meeting, request a meeting, makes it sound like we're stonewalling. Just turn over the information that's in there. We know it's not going to be accurate. Here's what we have recorded. You go reconcile your statements, because it sounds like they must have bank statements. I mean, they must have taken votes and approved certain things.
Sure. At ConCom, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, sitting on this side, I don't know if we're talking about there's, there's a $1,000 issue, or if there's a $1 million discrepancy. I don't think it's that large.
Yeah.
But it, it comes up every single month. Look, just run a status of accounts and turn it over. If it's blank, it's blank. We'll deal with it, but...
Yeah, but John, we have not gotten any account balances on any of the revolving counts, and I think it's a problem.
Well, yes. But we know the 2020 numbers are done now. She, you know, Tanya gave us the audit. They're done. We know what the starting numbers are.
Yeah, but we're also looking for...
Which is the starting point for 2021. And then, what I'm saying is, you take that starting point, and you have the activity that the temporary town accountant posted, if there is any in there. This is what it is. You know, they know what, well, where's this, or where's that, whatever. They, they should be running, you know, I, I haven't spoken to Mr. Lawrence, but I'm assuming with this level of public outcry that he is expressing repeatedly, that he must have some sort of records.
He definitely does.
So, let's, let's take what's in the system, crisscross, yep, this matched, this matched, this doesn't, and then give that to Bradley to work on, versus continue to wait for Bradley to set aside time to meet with him.
I'll let Ed speak to this.
Push back a little bit.
I will, I'll just say one thing. I know that Art keeps pretty good detailed records. He has spent time, I know when Regina was here as our interim accountant, he met with her at least once and talked through things, and they shared information. I don't believe there was an agreement on the different balances at that point in time, and maybe that went back to FY '20. I don't know for sure. But Ed, your response in terms of whether that's a realistic thing to have Bradley help out and try to get some of these revolving counts?
I'm just saying, just provide a status of accounts.
Or a status of account, whatever you say.
Here's the transactions that we show in the system right now, because if, if there's a discrepancy, we need, it's only going to help us out with our outside services.
Sure. No, that's true.
And if that's all it is, I'm happy to have Bradley do it. Other, other than that, right now, our priority is to make all the adjustments so we can finish the Schedule A.
True.
But I think that, you know, the accounting department is the official record of expenditures. And if we, as a board, approve up to $15,000 of this, or up to that, you know, I think that it's not unrealistic. And if your pattern is to have information so you can do a good job with your budget, then it's not unrealistic to ask for that. It's just that, you know, you're right. We had to have the audit, and then we're having the, you know, the closing the books of FY '21. So, it's definitely a sequence of things, but it's not unrealistic to want to have an official accounting.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, that will, we'll make that, make that happen. So, will we have...
And I just do want to add, I did, I did reach out to the town accountant. If the treasurer had reached out to him, and there had been no communication.
Okay.
So, in defense of the town accountant.
Okay. All right. Well, there's a little bit more that can be done to help reconcile this and, and get, get everybody the information they need to work on, on the records and help identify where there might be any variances. Okay? All right. Good. So, that's the end of the quarterly reports. Let's keep on moving, guys. We've got a long meeting ahead of us. Appointments and resignations. John, would you like to take this one, a PQB one here? Or...
Sure. So, let me flip back here.
Yeah. Do we have a resignation?
Honor about September 10th, 2021, Christine Slattery, who was at that point the Chair of the PPPB Board, submitted an email without a wet signature to the town clerk indicating that, I'll read it, "I would like the, the town of Southampton, I would like the town of Southampton that I will be resigning from the PPP effective immediately. My decision was not an easy one, but my family needs me to come first. I would like to thank the board for working with me and Robin for everything you have done for me." Again, that was dated September 10th. We've gone back and forth with the town clerk, attempting to get a wet signature. Long story short, is on January 21st, our town administrator reached out to KP Law to inquire or get clarification as to whether or not a personal email sent directly to the town clerk was sufficient to meet the standard to accept the resignation of an elected official. They indicated that, yes, it was. In my opinion, an email resignation from an elected official is sufficient, if delivered to the town clerk. Have a good weekend. Our town clerk then submitted it through the town administrator on January 25th to be on tonight's agenda, to accept the resignation.
All right. So, could we have a motion to that effect, please?
I move to accept Christine Slattery's resignation from the PQB.
All right. Second, John?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. So, that means we have an opening on the PQB that, if any, if we have any interested people out there?
Earlier, two.
Two openings. So, anybody that might have some human resource personnel experience, we'd love to hear from you. The next one is an appointment. This is for John O'Shea, and this is to the Public Safety Building Committee, a term to expire June 30th, 2024. And John O'Shea from Middle Road, Southampton, has written to us and states that he's a retired 33-year member of the Springfield Fire Department. He was a deputy chief there and worked at the White Street Fire Station, worked on the White Street Fire Station Committee for four years, and has an associate's degree in fire science from STIC in 1991. And he also worked on the committee that recommended Chief Workman to the Select Board a few years ago, when he was coming on as our fire, fire chief. So, John O'Shea has put in his request to be on the new, newly revised Public Building Committee, Public Safety Committee.
If I could, I, I believe later on tonight, we're going to, we're going to approve the final charge.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Which includes the makeup of the body.
Right.
So, if I could respectfully suggest that we either hold this until we do that, and then assuming we approve that, we forward it to the committee, to that committee for consideration. Because frankly, myself, I don't know how many public servants, or I, I don't know where he fits on that committee, on what we may approve later on.
I think he may, well, okay. He might fit with other previous public safety experience and the, the member, the four members of the public that we had allocated, I think. But that would be my thing. John, yes?
Technically, this board has approved the charge. This is simply on here, because it's now been amended, and it's back for signature.
Yeah. But I think if I, and I have it right here. So, we have one slot for the fire chief himself, which would be Chief Workman, and then four members of the community or surrounding area with experience in engineering, construction, architecture, financial management, or previous public safety experience. So, I guess that would be where he would fit. I don't know if anybody has any comments?
Well, I'm, I agree with John. I think it's a good idea to kind of look at who have we already appointed, what did we agree is the charge, because there are, I think there is a question that I think we should, you know, relook at that and then say, okay, this, he fits here. And then we'll have a better idea of what positions, if any, are still available.
All right. So, we'll hold off on this until we get to the charge?
Yeah. I'd like...
Okay. We'll keep on moving then. That's fine. Thank you. We'll come back to that. All right. Town Administrator Report. Ed?
Sure. All right. Updates. We have received the rest of our first order of the home COVID-19 rapid tests, and we have started the distribution process. We do expect to receive the, the second order of these home test kits at the beginning of next week. The TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement Plan, update requests are currently out from the Pioneer Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. Randall Kemp and I, along with VHB, will be working on updating the projects for the town's request for TIP funding. And I will be meeting with our Maya Insurance Risk Analyst Manager to review our, our account on this Friday, February 4th. And Novus, the vendor for our cybersecurity improvement grant, did come back out to the town hall for a site visit as a, as a follow-up. And this is the grant we received through the Massachusetts Compact IT Grant Program. And then Kim Florick and I also had another follow-up meeting with them via Zoom. They are gathering information in regard to upgrading and building our cybersecurity and disaster recovery system, along with migrating the rest of the town hall employees' computers over to the Microsoft 365. And then upcoming Select Board meetings, regular meeting on February 15th, Select Board Joint Meeting with the Hampshire Regional School Committee on February 7th, and Select Board meetings for March are to, to be determined.
Okay.
Could I just ask, what, what's the purpose of the, of the joint meeting? Of the what? Of the joint meeting with Hampshire Regional?
I believe it's for their budget.
Yeah. I, I think the plan was that they were going to have it on Zoom and include the Select Boards from all the towns, so that they only do one presentation.
Select Boards and Finance Committee.
It's not just Southampton.
No. And it was... No. And it was put out as a joint meeting in case any of us, or more than a quorum, would attend, that we would be covered by having that, I believe. I think several of us would like to tune in at least for part of it, so.
Yes, and I have put that up as a posting, as a joint meeting with them, in case there is a quorum or more of the select board that attends.
Okay. Yep. Any comments, questions for Ed on that? All right. How about some Select Board Reports? Joy, would you like to start?
Planning Board met January 19th via Zoom. They discussed the DLTA grant and applying for the grant so they could get some funds to help with redoing the zoning bylaws, specifically the inclusionary bylaw, actually. And so I think they did apply.
They did.
Yes, they did.
They have applied. I know they've applied.
Yes, they did apply. And they also discussed ARPA and funding for sidewalks to become ADA compliant. I think they were going to go in deeper what that actually meant and what sidewalks they were referring to. Their next meeting is February 2nd, 7:00 PM, it says right now, at the town hall. There is a Edwards Library Trustees Meeting, February 3rd at 6:00 PM at the library conference room. The next Conservation Commission Meeting is February 7th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. The next Southampton Housing Authority Meeting is also February 7th, 6:00 PM via Zoom. And the next open space meeting is Thursday, February 10th at 6:00 PM, also via Zoom. That is all.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Renee?
Assessors is meeting pretty much every two weeks, and they're mostly just taking care of the work of the office, nothing additional to meet, to report. Still have the assistant doing extra hours and interim principal assessor, without a lot of candidates for the principal assessor position, unfortunately. Council on Aging is meeting tomorrow at 4:00. So no updates, other than to just say that there's been conversation back and forth between the folks that are managing the estate of David Parsons, and we found out recently that that we stand as a community to inherit probably a minimum of $2.5 million towards the design and plan for a future senior center. So we'll be, again, I keep mentioning this, but we will be discussing the forming of a senior center building committee. In the meantime, there's been some looking at other centers and finding out some information about the process that, for example, Will Hadley, Sol Hadley, Westfield, Longmeadow have gone through. But more to update after tomorrow's meeting. Public Safety Committee, I believe, has posted a meeting for the 14th of February, but I'm going to swing back after tonight's meeting and have a conversation with Charlie about that, just to confirm that all the people that are on the committee have been notified, if that's still going to be the case. And CPC Virginia already reported on.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Francine?
Okay. The Shared Human Resource Feasibility Project with PVPC met on January 19th. And I want to report that they're close to having a contract with UMass Boston Collier Center to conduct the feasibility of shared resources among the small towns of Western Massachusetts. The feasibility to share human resources will be based on information that's gathered through interviews with the town administrators in each of these towns, along with other representatives, to collect information on the human resources need in each of these towns. The final report will detail baseline services augmented by an a la carte service menu based on each town's needs. The UMass Collier Center has already stated that their organization will be available to provide these services on an ongoing basis at the conclusion of this study. The Collier representative, Center representative estimated that she would complete the study by the end of March, which is sufficient time to include any service buy-in in our fiscal year '23 budget. The Norris School Committee held a special meeting on January 24th to decide how it will modify its COVID procedures based on guidance from the state and, you know, a better understanding of the pandemic's evolution. By a vote of four to zero, the committee decided the school would conduct weekly pool testing on Tuesdays for consenting families, with students and staff conducting home tests on Thursdays or Fridays, using the supply of home testing kits made available through the school. The school nurses will no longer conduct contact tracing. It was reported that based on data from all the participating elementary schools and Hampshire Regional High School, that there was a 98.6% of all the tests that were conducted was negative, and that's very good news. For more details, please check the Norris School website. And then on January 27th, the Board of Health met. Unfortunately, the second vaccine clinic that was scheduled for January 29th was postponed until this Saturday, February 5th, due to the predicted winter storm. It will be held at Norris School for both children and adults. And just to say, to report that approximately 200 people received the vaccination at the first clinic that was held at Norris in early January. At the time of this meeting, there are still vaccination slot appointments available. So if you're interested, please go to the Board of Health. They wanted everyone to know that through private insurance, eight at-home test kits per month, per family member, will be reimbursed by private insurance companies. Unfortunately, Medicare and Medicaid insurance does not pay for home test kits. The director reported that Southampton had 36 cases as of last week, compared to approximately 200 cases in the earlier part of January. As the town received a partial delivery, now full delivery, at the time of this meeting, of its first test kit order, the distribution of those kits has begun. The Select Board agreed to purchase an additional 700 tests, and based on the availability of test kits at school, et cetera, there will be further discussion about how the second order will be, recommendations about how the second order will be distributed. And that will come a little further at the next Board of Health meeting. There was discussion of the need to get information out about code red and lock boxes, especially to seniors and those living alone. The Norris Schools letter, the town website, and other local publications will be used to get that word out. We heard the concerns that were brought to the Board of Health from the Hampden Pond residents, so I won't bother to report anything on that. I think we all are now better informed about what their situation is. There was also a brief discussion about the Department of Public Health Regulations regarding the recently approved splash pad slash spray deck at Connet Park. It should be noted that there are different regulations that apply to a splash pad than a spray deck with, because the former requires recirculating water, as opposed to a spray deck, which means the water is disposed, it's not recirculated. The next Board of Health meeting is scheduled for February 22nd at 5:00 PM. And then finally, the Bylaws Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 10:30 via Zoom. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. There's one thing, I think, question on the tests. The number of tests is the test kits, right, Ed? 700 test kits, which is two tests in a kit, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so not tests, but test kits.
Not tests, but test kits. You're right.
It's just under 700.
Thank you.
A little bit under 700.
696 to be exact.
Yeah.
I rounded it up. I was optimistic. Thank you.
But they're not the tests, they're the test kits.
The test kits themselves, yes, contain two tests. Thank you.
And then the UMass, is it the Collins Center? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The Collins Center, the Collier Center, Collins Center.
Collins, yes.
The Collins Center at UMass.
Very good. Okay. Good. Lot of activity there. Very good. Thanks. John, anything?
Capital Committee has yet to meet this fiscal year. Finance Committee is looking, as I understand, is looking to find a date to meet. So that should be coming up soon. And then the PPPB Committee did meet, and I'll save the highlights for when we get to the signature section of the agenda.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks. All right. Let me jump to the Grant Committee. I guess that's it, among others here. Okay. Well, first of all, let me say, on the agenda for the quarterly reports, I will say that the Master Plan Implementation Committee was due again for this quarter. But since we had given our report at the end of October and we're only meeting quarterly, I asked that if we would push the MPIC report off until March, because we are meeting again in about two weeks, and there had been no activity since we met in October. The Grant Committee has been very busy over the last couple of weeks. Two grant applications have been submitted this past week. There was a Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant request that was submitted to have funds to help us hire a consultant to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan itself. The request itself went in at $22,000, and then there is a 25% required match to that, and that is calculated based on the value of labor. So in terms of people's participation in the various committee meetings and outreach that's got to happen. And that we calculated to be, with the number of hours and the people involved, to be about $7,500. So we've met the 25%, and that time will be tracked, and we would have to put in for reimbursement of the $7,500 of the value of our town members' time in participating in this update process. The committee itself, since it had not been active for a number of years now, has been re-envisioned with it being led by the EMD Fire Chief. It includes the Highway Superintendent, the Water Superintendent, the Police Chief, the Tree Warden, the Board of Health Director, the Norris School Principal, the Town Administrator, and one member from the Select Board. MEMA has told us that it would take up to maybe 24 months to do the update. We wanted it shorter, and they said that's not realistic, based on everything that they know of, because a lot of this is a pass-through from MEMA to FEMA, and therefore, it takes a whole lot longer to do just a simple update. We're not starting from scratch, but essentially, you have to go through the entire about 100 pages of the Hazard Mitigation Plan and go through every chapter and reevaluate everything that was written some five or six years ago. So anyway, we've put in for the grant application for that, and hopefully, that will get us some money to be able to go out and find a proper consultant to help us do the update. Secondly, another application went into Mass Trails, and this time, it was for design work on the bike path on the greenway. We're moving right along with the legal process of acquiring the railroad right-of-way and expecting, hopefully, the rail banking agreement to be finalized by the end of June. And so simultaneously, we need to be looking for design money to get going on that, so that we're not having a hiatus. We already do have $100,000 approved by the, recommended by the CPC and approved by the voters. So $100,000 is a good down payment to get started on some design work. However, it's nowhere near sufficient. We've been estimating perhaps around $600,000 might be needed. The grant that we've just written a grant application for and put in for is for $300,000. And should we get that, that's going to be great. That will get us a long way down the road, but it's still short of the full amount for design work that's likely to be needed, all the design and engineering and permitting work that would have to happen. And lastly, I guess I'll report on the Tech Committee, Ed, if you don't mind. The Tech Committee's been very, very busy, working with Ed to finalize the details of what's needed for the implementation of the voice-over IP system, and also looking at a couple of other aspects of our IT and just communication system in general. And to that end, they've had a couple of meetings kind of back-to-back. They've had a rep from Civic Plus, who came and made a presentation about website redesign process. Civic Plus is an entity that's been working with several towns in the valley, especially East Hampton and others. And they came in and had a lot of things to say that were very encouraging, and I think something that we will explore further. But there's been at least some initial foray into that. And then last night, they had a meeting with reps from the Whip City Fiber folks in Westfield, who joined the meeting to present sort of the how-to steps on what we would have to do to form a municipal light plant here in town, should we decide that we wanted to go with the notion of managing our own internet system. A lot of that, if you remember, we had a presentation from them probably two and a half years ago now. And so this would be having them probably give us a little bit of an update. They're willing to do an update of some costs, take a look at how many poles we have in town.
Who's this?
Whip City. Give us an idea of what the initial cost might be, because they weren't able to give us any real costing last night. One of the ideas that did come up was whether or not, now that they're really established in Westfield, they aren't fully covering Westfield yet, but the idea of maybe doing a test neighborhood toward the south end of town came up as an idea, that we could try it out, see if this is really something that makes sense, you know, what the level of buy-in would be. So there was preliminary discussion that I thought was very, very interesting. The Tech Committee has asked Ed to also reach out to Hoyok Gas and Electric, because they do the same kind of thing as Whip City, and to have them come to the next techs meeting to also give a presentation and let us know what they're thinking about. So I think that's basically it. So there's been a lot of activity, both on the grant and on the Tech Committee. And then lastly, the Cost efficiencies Committee has had a second meeting now, and that is starting to move along a little bit. We've taken a look at some of the town services that we're providing and have tried to look at first two particular areas. One of those is going to be the town services that we can have that potentially could enhance our income, our revenue stream. And then others that could be those that could generate some cost savings. So we have an assignment for our next meeting, which is due, let's see, February 17th is our next meeting. And people have been assigned to do some research and do some application of our criteria on the various topics that were raised. So we're getting going on that, and that's encouraging as well. So that's it for committee report-outs, I think. All right? Any questions? Yeah, Renee?
Can I ask you a question about the Hazard Mitigation Plan? It's kind of disappointing to hear that that would involve so much time. Is the $22,000 going to be enough, given how long it's going to take and how comprehensive it is? Does this mean going out to bid, and out of the $7,500, can that be in-kind? We don't have to allocate it. It can be in-kind?
I'm sorry. Yes, that is in-kind. Sorry. I meant to say, yeah, the $7,500 is in-kind, and that is the value of the labor, if you will, of all those people I mentioned that would be on the committee. So it would be their time, you know, based on their salary, infringement rate, et cetera, that had to be calculated in. But when we actually have the update meetings, to get the full amount of the grant, we will be turning in something that shows people at MEMA that people actually came to the meetings and did the number of hours that we predicted. So given the level of responsibilities of people within the committee, you know, the EMD has got the most hours allocated, obviously, and then it goes down from there.
Okay.
$22,000, we were told anywhere between 20 and 25 would be a reasonable amount. And so by putting the two together, that kept us right under the $30,000 amount, which seemed palatable.
If we get the grant, do we have to then go out to bid?
We've got to get three quotes. We won't go out to bid, per se, but we do have to have comparative quotes. But that's a fairly simple process. Last time, PVPC is the one that helped us actually generate the Hazard Mitigation Plan itself about five, six years ago. However, we've been told by MEMA, we cannot simply just go back out to PVPC by themselves. We've got to, we may end up with them, but we have to have at least two other quotes as well. So I think it won't be a terribly onerous process to do that.
And I think our plan either is expiring or has already expired. Are we in any jeopardy, and what if we don't get the 20, what if we don't get the grant?
Yeah. Well, that's a good point. The plan expired yesterday, on the 31st, I believe. We, as long as we are in the process of updating it, it's already on record with MEMA. The application went to MEMA, they review it, and then they forward it on to FEMA.
Okay.
So we are on record as having action on our Hazard Mitigation Plan, and as long as, plan, and as long as we're in the process, that doesn't count against us for anything. If we didn't get the grant, yeah, that's a good question. Because we don't have another plan at the moment for another grant to go for that. But I will say that in talking to MEMA, I was actually surprised at how limited and almost simplistic the application was compared to many of the others we've done. And I said, but don't you really, you know, what's going to make Southampton stand out compared to other towns, given the sort of standard language? And it's like, just, you know, fill in the blank here. And it's like, but how are we any different? She said, really, don't worry about it. There's enough money out there.
Yeah, okay, good.
It'll happen. And so MEMA's sort of, I guess, collating, if you will, all the different town ones from throughout the state, and then passing them all to FEMA as one big package, is what I understand. So they didn't seem, they didn't promise the money, but they certainly didn't seem to be worried about us not having the ability to get the money. So I'm going to go on that with fingers crossed for a couple of months, and hopefully, we'll hear about it sometime. I'd say probably two months, two to three months down the line now. I'd say probably two months, two to three months down the line now. But so that's where we are on that.
And thank you for doing that. I just have one question about the fiber.
Yep.
So there are currently Southampton residents that are taking advantage of Whip City Fiber. So I don't know whether or not they can use that cohort as a test community.
Good job.
I mean, our fire chief who volunteered that at a previous meeting is one of the people as well. So I think people down in the south side are already accessing it. And there were positive comments made when they did the fiber optic presentation, so.
Right. Good to know. Yeah, and I think that's something that, you know, they'll have a, a better ability to study in terms of where, where those residents are. You know, they, they have the mapping and they'll know where things are on that part of town in particular, so. Good, all right. Very good. If nothing else, we'll keep on moving here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Old business. COVID update, we've heard a little bit. Any more to add on that, Ed, at all?
No, numbers are still dropping dramatically, much like they did last year. However, the caveat with that is if you look at where they've dropped to and from, they're still higher than they were a year ago. But, you know, I mean, all indications of that curve is that, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll be fairly low in another couple of weeks.
But the other thing to remember is that there are a higher percentage of people that are doing in-home rapid testing because of its availability and that is not publicly reported. So I think that the hospitals are still in code red and there's still a, you know, huge problem. So I would encourage people, there's still a mask mandate in town, get vaccinated, there's a clinic on Saturday. Board of Health is willing to help people get that set up and will be, you know, getting the test kits out, but I just don't want anybody to let up.
You know, hospitalizations are still, yeah, a definite issue. They're, they are still maxed out.
No, even though the number might be 36 cases as of a few days ago, I mean, that's probably quite under-reported compared to the reality, given people that are doing the.
Even though we're past the holiday sort of spike, we're now about to enter a college, you know, like, don't forget all the colleges are coming back.
I'm breaking.
So there's always something around the corner. We just have to make sure we, you know, do all we can to protect each other.
Right. Thanks, Brene. Okay. All right. CARES Act update, Ed?
Yes, I, I think we've seen the last of the CARES invoices come through, so I will start preparing my, our, our final report on that. I have notified Bobby Jones in the central office of the exact wording and the fiscal years for the funds that the select board voted to transfer to the Norris School. So then I will just ask them for a report on what those funds were actually expended on and the accounts they were originally charged, or charged to, to go along with that report.
Great. And that was pretty much the school nurse restoring, you know, or getting to full time, but also I think it was for some.
Yeah, it was.
HVAC or some?
$12,501, I think it was, for HVAC repairs and that was in fiscal year '21. Then everything else was in fiscal year '22. There was $450 for, I think, mold testing. And then there was like $4,000 and something for actual mold remediation, from my memory. And then I can't remember, I think there was like maybe $32,000 for school nurses and then an additional $6,000 for nurses that was transferred when the housing authority relinquished their, their funds.
So we basically used up the money that we had available?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I noticed on the revenue and expense report, there was still listed as $12,000. That will be dispersed, right? That money will?
No, the $12,000 was the new money we got. The third tranche, right?
Yeah, the $12,000, if, if you're looking at the, like, a revenue report.
Yeah.
There was $12,800 and some odd dollars that they, when we had done phase two, they had denied from us. So we had reapplied to utilize that funding and after a little pushing back, because they had cut it in half again, they authorized the $12,890 that was left. So that, that was the very last piece to take us to our maximum allocation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Okay. East Street Bridge. We saw some great photos the other day, courtesy of Dan LeBrie, that were out on Facebook.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's moving along. Once they got through the issues with, whether you want to call them piles or pillars that they had to drive in, they did finally get them all to set and have the needed load from the soil or the ledge that they sat on. However, there is, I think, two of them that ended up driving down lower than they anticipated. So VHB had to do, approve a little redesign on how the bridge would actually sit upon those. That's, that has been done and the contractor has ordered the needed rebar and materials to actually make them sit on those two pillars.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. All right. The rapid test kits, you mentioned it briefly, just talk a little bit maybe about how some of these are getting distributed, perhaps?
Sure. I can tell you that, let's see, so far, the town employees in town hall and the highway department have received theirs. 100 have been giving, given to the COA for the senior citizens. Let's see, 50 have been, are, are going to be distributed tomorrow to the housing for the elderly up, up the street. Someone, Kate Swystek Brooks was setting up for someone from the school to pick up the 200 for Norris School and the 50 for the combined Hampshire Regional and Smith Vocational. Still have the community cupboard, which, and I can't remember the number that were allocate, allocated to them. We'll need some way to get that to them. And other than that, I've got to, I'll distribute the ones to the police department tomorrow while we have our negotiation session.
Library? Library?
Yeah, I'll have to get some over to the library too and I, I'd have to go over there anyway, so I will, I will take those personally.
I can, as I mentioned, I can take the ones for the cupboard because I live on the same street as the head of the cupboard, so I can get them to.
That'd be great, thank you. I appreciate the help with that.
Yep. Okay.
And then, like I say, the, the rest of the orders, I anticipate, will be here beginning of next week.
Great. Very good. Okay. There's nothing on that. How about the VOIP update? Where are we with?
Yes.
Actually moving on that?
Chris Sorenson sent us back the amended proposal, broken out with us purchasing the phones and then leasing the syst, the system itself for three years. We are getting, he was able to get us one conference phone. I have one question for the select board is, one of the meetings when we talked about this, the select board showed some interest in actually having two conference phones. So we had one for this room and one for the one upstairs. So I will ask the select board if you would like me to purchase a second conference phone out of the ARPA funds.
I personally think that would be a good idea to have a phone upstairs, do you want to? Or have two phones, whether, I don't know that we need two here, but one here and one upstairs. We use that conference room upstairs quite a bit as well.
What was authorized for funding for the, for the, this project? I mean, it was supposed to be a cost savings, if I remember correctly, so, right? I mean, when it was presented.
Eventually.
Eventually, right.
Eventually, as we cut down on our copper Verizon lines, there should be a little bit of a savings.
So remind me what, what's covering the, all the phones that are currently ordered? And the conference phone? Is this, what's?
Well, the conference phone, we're basically getting gratis.
Okay.
They're not charging us for that. The other phones, the select board at the last meeting authorized us to pay for the phones rather than leasing them, pay for them through ARPA funds.
So it's ARPA, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Couldn't you just ask them for a second conference phone? Gratis? Couldn't you just ask them for another?
I did already. He emailed me back today that he was sorry that he couldn't get a second, second one. So I, I figured as long as we're doing the process of the ordering right now, I would ask what the select board's preference was.
Is there any reason not to have a phone upstairs?
No, I think, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, can you, can we talk about how or where, when it would be used?
Well, it would be utilized during meetings if basically some, well, it could also be used as business. You can go in there and have a conference call with someone if you need to, but boards or committees would be able to use that conference phone theoretically for remote participation.
And how much is it?
That I don't know. My guess is it's going to be somewhere between $500 and $1,000.
Wow. I just think, you know, everything's all in the way of video anyway. I'm just thinking about, would we actually use it? Should we just go with what we have for now and not incur an extra expense and think about it down the road? I mean, right now, I think the tendency is to do a Zoom meeting.
But this would allow for, well, okay, this would allow for conference, yeah, a Zoom meeting to come in if, if some, if we had a hybrid meeting, if somebody, like tonight, if somebody was absent and needed to call in, that would allow that to happen, right?
Is it portable? Could we move it from here to the second floor if we needed to?
You could, and I, I mean, one of my, and you will only run into an issue if you have two committees on the same date and time that want to do that. And in fact, you know, the phones are expensive enough. The question becomes whether you have one or do, whether you have two, if you actually leave it in these rooms or do you lock it up in probably my office and have people, you know, basically, you know, say, okay, we're going to need the phone tonight, can you set it up and we'll get, you know, we'll get it back to you?
I've just been in too many conference rooms with, you know, spaceship phones that I never use.
Yeah. Well, anybody have any thoughts? Should we?
Well, I mean, in the, in, you know, if you just look at the town meeting calendar, there aren't that many conflicting meetings, you know, or simultaneous meetings going on. So the likelihood that there would be two, need for two at the same time is, would be rare.
All right. So I'm hearing we go with the one for this room right now and if later on down the line we need a second one, we could deal with it at that point in time?
Right. And like I say, if there's no conflicts, you can actually move it upstairs if somebody's using, utilizing that room.
All right. If nobody has any objection to that, is there any further discussion? If not, shall we just all agree? Yes, that we'll just stick with the one conference room phone for now?
Yes.
All right. I'm hearing agreement, John, yes or no?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm neutral.
Okay. All right. So one for now, Ed, I guess on the conference one.
Okay.
All right. Great. All right, moving on to new business. All right, so this is, I'm understanding acceptance of a new voting machine and its technology and discontinuing the old voting machine. So I'll let you run us through that one, please. We have a, information in our package.
Yeah, Lucy found out that the state actually requires a vote and a signed letter from the select board when they're changing voting tabulators and machines. So this, we're asking for the select board to vote the acceptance of the use of the new image cast precinct tabulators, ICP tabulator voting machines, and discontinuance of the old AccuVote optical scan tabulator voting machines.
All right. And this would take effect for the May 17th elections?
Correct.
All right. Any questions about that?
Yep.
Good.
So Ed, to the extent that you know this, I know you're not the town clerk, but do we actually have the new machines?
Yes.
Do we have custody of the new machines?
I'm trying to think, I believe we have the first one, the original one, already, but I don't believe we have the, the second one that was ordered.
Second one's been ordered, I think, right?
Yes.
Right. So it's been ordered, but let's play devil's advocate. If we don't receive it by May 17th and we vote to approve this tonight, are we not able to use the one that we just voted that we're not going to use anymore? Me, so I think.
Well, you would also not be able to use the one we already have on hand. Which I believe actually we've already utilized, so.
So what do you, do we have an idea of, of when the delivery might be for the next one? We don't know?
It's supposed to be here before the May election and then, and all the, basically all the ballots and whatever would be set up for the new ones.
And they've been tested, and it's been tested?
Well, the original one has been.
Okay.
We've already used it.
Right.
Even though we knew.
We used it in November.
But we, I mean, you want to test this one too?
Yeah, well, obviously, once it gets here, that, they'd have to do that. But if the ballots are going to be printed to fit in these particular machines, then.
Yep.
All right? To be able to read them correctly.
I would. Be a frightening scenario.
Is there a particular deadline to actually respond to this or to put this notice of determination back to the, to the state?
Ed, I do not know.
I guess my thing is, is, I mean, if you want to vote on this tonight, I'm going to vote against it, but I would vote in favor of it if the last paragraph, the wording, was changed. But, you know, right now it's an absolute. It doesn't leave us a way out.
If you made it some, you know, conditional.
Right.
Based on receipt of the.
It's our intent to do it by May 17th, but if the vote tabulary machine does not arrive from Savannah, Georgia until May 18th, we still have to hold the vote.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we just table this until?
Was this, was this standard language at all or was this?
Clarification?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I, I guess I'm hearing enough question there.
I think that's a good.
To maybe hold off on this and bring it back at the next meeting if we get some other detail about that, if we can modify that language, let them know that we're in the process of waiting for, we've ordered it, we're waiting for the new machine, but if we, if that is standard language that they're asking for, we may be cutting ourselves short.
Well, yeah, I get the standard, but, but I think, I think the third paragraph could be reworded a little bit and I would even suggest that, I believe we're meeting next Tuesday anyways for executive session, this could be the sole public agenda item.
Could bring it back, yeah.
You know, so not to cause the clerk to be too.
Right. But I guess this is, this is standard language is what I thought I understood from Ed. This is the language they provided.
Well, it's templated language.
Templated language, yeah.
Because it has the, shall we say, the brands or models of the voting machines inserted into it.
Yeah. Well, let's, let us, let us, let us hold off on this tonight. I would agree with that notion and have it come back at the beginning of our executive session next week, provided we get some other information. And if we could just modify that last paragraph to a certain extent, saying that we will discontinue that upon receipt and testing or whatever of the.
Right, correct.
Of the new machine.
Yep.
I think you're, you're right. We could, we could find ourselves short with what they're doing here. Is that okay, Ed? Does that work?
Whatever you would like.
Okay. Do we want to motion to that effect to hold off on this?
I believe we table it.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will bring it back next week. Okay. VHB conceptual design proposal, East Street.
Just skip over one.[1748.41]
What did I do? Sorry. Well, I didn't have anything in my package about it, the highway dump truck?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Way back when, when it, I believe when it went to, we put on the warrant, I believe it was, John made the portion of his motion that it can only be ordered if it comes back to the Select Board for approval. So I have kept that in the back of my mind. So we have an opportunity to order one. They have a slot available. And John's premise was, okay, where's the debt payments going to fall? So they would anticipate that we would be, if we ordered now, be able to receive this truck sometime around the end of this calendar year. So it would be here roughly in time for the next winter. We would obviously have to pay for it when we receive it. To not negatively affect our free cash situation, we would have to borrow for it. Probably to be safe around the May 2023 timeframe, which, if that was the case, would put the larger of the two payments, the principal payment into fiscal year '24. It would fall a year later. And let's see, what Brienne told me about the principal payment. And we can do a couple of things. She doesn't, if this was the only thing that we were borrowing for, Brienne from Unibank does not recommend that we bond for it just because of the bond costs that go along with it. She'd either recommend a one-year note to start and then renew them or do an eight-year serial note. My preference, at least at this point in time, would be an eight-year serial note. And the first interest payment, and that would be due six months after the note was issued, so November '23. So you'd have an interest payment, and I'm just doing this from what the last truck cost us, an interest payment of about $11,000 due in November '23, which is fiscal '23. We'd have to plan for that in this particular budget. But the principal payment would not hit until fiscal year '24.
Remind me, this was around $200,000?
Actually, if we do, that's for the one-year note. If we do an eight-year serial note, we have the alternative to do the first payment in six months, which is the November 2023, or a year from then, which would be May 2024. So you'd be back into '24 and semiannually thereafter.
So it'd be a one-year and then renew it?
Right, if we did the eight-year serial, correct. Which would, like I say, at this point, would be my, my preference, rather than one year and then keep renewing them.
And the amount on this was around $290,000, if I remember?
$294,000 was what was authorized to borrow at the town meeting. The original quote, which we'd have to renew, was like $292,000 and some change.
So the question before us is whether we would like to authorize the ordering process to go now because there's a slot open that we could take advantage of. Otherwise, we're on a waiting list to.
Right, and we'd have the truck for just about in time for the next winter.
Yeah, we'd have it by winter of '23.
I don't see the reason.
Or no, winter of '22.
What would be a good reason to delay this? Other borrowing potential?
We were afraid we were at the top of our borrowing.
Well, if you're just trying to get the debt payments out even further in the fiscal years.
Right, right, right. But if we're already talking about '24.
I mean, I think in order to be able to order this and get it by December-ish of 2022, so it's in use for next winter, that would seem to make a whole lot of sense, right?
What's the logic on an eight-year? What are you thinking on that?
Well, at the time, I, that matches what I told her I thought we would be, our borrowing period would be.
And she recommended one year?
We could go, you know, theoretically longer than that because if my memory's correct, I.
The useful life of the vehicle.
I believe we used a, I think it was a 12-year useful life the last time we did one of these. But I know the bonding companies look favorably on paying the debt off shorter than doing it for the useful life. So eight years is just what I threw out there. We could, you know, we could do seven-year serial notes.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I get, and then my other thing is, I'm just, I'm wondering why we're continuing to go through with the bank, which has additional costs and not utilizing the State House note program. I'm just trying to understand the logic.
Well, we use them as our financial advisors, so.
For fee.
That was basically the easiest way for me to find out the exact, you know, dates of this, to bring it back to the Slot Board.
Well, and this would not tie us right now on, in terms of any kind of financing. For now, we've still got time to look at the state notes and figure out.
No, you're right. So I guess if you're looking for a motion to approve this, I mean, I'd be open to making a motion to approve it pending, well, not really pending, because we're going to do it. But, you know, ideally, I'd like to see verbally, the town administration has expressed, okay, here's the thought process and that. But, you know, much like I said to the fire chief, I need the piece of paper in front of me.
What are the options for financing?
If we had to be writing, I agree.
And so I'm comfortable that that will get done between now and next month, per se, because we'll want to incorporate this. Well, you're saying the first payment would be due in November?
No.
May.
May, six months after delivery.
Well, actually, if we do, if we do the serial notes, it wouldn't be.
You said November '23?
Yeah, it wouldn't be due until May of '24.
Okay, so you don't, you don't, if we move forward tonight, you don't believe the first financial impact to the town will be for another full fiscal year? Okay. I think the dump truck's needed.
I do, too.
Take the spot that's in line and hope they have all the chips they need to produce this thing.
Okay, so let's have a motion to allow Ed to move forward with Randall to put the dump truck acquisition in process.
Don't move.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Who seconded that?
I don't think anybody did.
Francine did. Chris made the motion.
I don't know.
Well, she spelled it out and presumed it sounded good to us.
Somebody seconded that. Francine must have done it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We'll put it on Francine. Okay, thanks, guys. Okay, that's clear. Thank you, Ed. All right, now the VHB conceptual design proposal for East Street. So here's another one that's been hanging out for many years, eh?
Yeah, I agree.
Wow, 2003 to 2012, VHB worked on this. Okay, so give us an update of what's being talked about here and the need for it.
So basically, to keep it on the tip, and believe it or not, this goes back to last March. We had asked VHB to, they had talked to Mass DOT about what Mass DOT thought would be an acceptable process to move forward with updating the design from 10 years ago or whatever it was that VHB had done, the first 25% design work. So they worked with Mass DOT and came back with a, with a plan. And this is the proposal for the bridge to Route 10. And then they're going to come back with another proposal, which would be a little bit different conceptual design for the bridge to County Road.
So I'm sorry, so this is Route 10 to the bridge?
This is Route 10 to the bridge, correct.
It's supposed to be a three-part process. I'm actually relieved to hear you say that because when I was reading through the documents on this, it wasn't clear that there will be a follow-up proposal that has the bridge to County Road. Because the funding that we're in line for is 2025 and it's 4,956,200. That's not going to do B and C, right?
They have it listed as doing, shall we say, whether you call it A and B or B and C on their plan. I mean, it's listed as doing Route 10 to County Road.
Right.
But we broke, we broke it into two parts for basically two different reasons. It looks like it's going to be two different designs that will use what I'll call the safe street design from Route 10 to the bridge, which will match that wide 10 or 11-foot sidewalk on the bridge, which is a shared path. Or the theory of getting over to like LaBri Field and whatever. If you think of the rest of East Street, I wonder how we're going to get a four-foot sidewalk all the way down, to be honest with you, never mind 11. So that would be a little bit different design for a narrower sidewalk. The other piece is even the design work, which we're using Chapter 90 monies for, is going to be quite considerable. So we, even though they'll, they'll actually be going on at relatively the same time, we just wanted to break it, break it up into two parts for those two reasons.
And my understanding is part of the reason for doing this is to have it be accepted by DOT. I still don't understand why it has to be two separate plans. Why can't you accommodate the sidewalk situation, the conservation of trees, the historical part, and then the second part of it? What's the advantage of having it be separate? I'm just worried about them not funding both of them.
Well, using a 10 or 11% design fee, you've got basically $500,000 to do the whole thing, design-wise. We get about a little over $300,000 in Chapter 90 funds each year.
Would the, the Chapter 90 funds and that, that are going to fund all this, would they be available for eminent domain?
Can't hear you, Jen.
Eminent domain, could those Chapter 90 funds be available for eminent domain? Or is the town going to be, I'm late to this project. I wasn't here in '03 through '12. But what I see in that third paragraph is that because, it's towards the end, but it says you've got to have a four-foot sidewalk on each side of the road. I mean, there's no way to do that without taking property.
Right, that's part of the process.
What's the funding source of taking that?
Yeah, basically, part of the process would be both permanent and temporary easements.
But the funding source, to make the, make the people whole, would, could Chapter 90 be that source? Or is this additional money outside of the project that we'd have to come up with?
Cover the easements.
Either way, I think it needs to happen. I'm just trying to wrap my head around all the facts.
I'd have to check, check on that.
And can't you not have it on both sides by having a multi-use sidewalk on one side? Isn't that what I read in that?
You can. One of the pieces would, we would ask for a waiver with, of the sidewalks on both sides. Whether they'll agree to it or not, usually when you get into the state or federal-funded projects, they're getting less and less leery to do that.
Well, either way, there's only one sidewalk on the bridge, yeah. But the, so the idea here would be only for this, because of the money that we have in Chapter.
This is just for this one. We're going to see another one for the other section, probably within a month.
Yeah, so this would be about $20,000 for this part, for redoing this design work, or however you want to call it.
For the conceptual design.
Conceptual design.
To keep it on the tip. And then we'll have to move forward from that with further design funds.
And whenever we get the second one in the next month, that would still be able to come out of the current Chapter 90 money? Or we, we wouldn't be able to?
Should be able to.
Okay.
And, and we're doing a few months anyway to get our, I think, our next allotment of Chapter 90.
Our new money, okay. I have another question.
And tell us about the VHB role here. Just given what we know about the bridge in history, what is, where's the accountability for funding? You know, like how, how much accountability is there for accurate estimates and that sort of thing? And do we, are we locked into VHB? Is, is that because they did the initial work on this?
It's going to be much easier and much quicker to move forward with VHB because they did the original 25% design work, correct. And then, basically, from the other end, from what they've got in the tip, and I expect that it'll probably actually go up from that $4.9 million. But, you know, that, that was the estimate from Mass DOT that was done by Mass DOT. So I don't expect that, because the estimate didn't come from VHB. And roadwork's a lot easier to estimate than bridge work is that there's going to be a huge discrepancy between what VHB comes back with and what Mass DOT would be having.
And currently, though, the $4.9 million is on the 25?
2025.
Not 20, we thought it was 27 at one point?
Well, I mean, at the time, I just.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's been pushed out. As they, because they look for a little, they look for you hitting, ticking those 25, 75, 100% design portions.
I just don't want this split into two to in any way negatively impact our ability to get funding, especially if we expect that the amount of this is going to, is way under it, 4.9, which I'm sure it is.
Like I say, the other one's going to be coming along in about a month. So they're not going to lag that far in time.
Do you recommend that we do this?
Yes, I do.
So this would allow them to get started even now, without doing anything?
And like I say, the tip, shall we say, applications are just opening up. We've got about a two-week period to work on that, so.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve VHB to conduct a conceptual design from Route 10 on East Street to the East Street Bridge. And the dollar amount is?
$20,000.
$20,000.
Chapter 90 funds.
From Chapter 90 funds.
All right, I hear a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
Do you need us to add into that motion authorization for somebody to sign on behalf of the town?
I've got the.
It looks like there's two different signatures.
I should have it.
It's got to be Select Board rather than Board Secretary. And just a question, Ed. Can I have a second on this before we continue discussion? I didn't hear a second.
Second.
The conceptual development date here, March 5, 2021. But that's going to change, no? In terms of whatever we sign.
They'll just scratch it off and initial it.
And so the idea would be to have this one get going. They're going to give us a second proposal for the other end of East Street.
Correct.
Both of those would be in time to be able to get in on the tip update sheet? Or is only one of them going to make?
Yeah, VHB will work with, with us to get both portions on this, renewed on this portion.
Maybe we ought to state that somewhere in one of these pieces of paper. I would feel more comfortable doing that, that this is, this is one of.
Yeah, I would actually add to that motion and vote that this is a weird form that you authorized me to sign it on behalf of the town because there's another slot for approved as to form for Board of Selectment or other. We'll have the chair of the Select Board sign there.
I mean, Bradley's already assigned, noted the availability of funds, so that's fine. Yeah, I mean, there may be just some things that need to be updated in the, you know, like the date on the first page there, if that's not appropriate anymore.
I guess I can just scratch that.
All right. Okay, so the motion was to go ahead with this. See if we can also add in some language that there will be a second proposal that, no matter what, VHB will work with DOT to ensure that both, whatever, both updates make it onto the revised tip projections?
You don't have a second proposal in front of you? I don't suggest you make that part of this motion.
Oh, okay. Or just to acknowledge that there would be a second one? No, okay. All right. Can somebody else revise my motion? Forget that. I will draw that motion.
Why, maybe the original motion that said that we were authorizing $20,000 for this. conceptual design from Route 20 to the East Street Bridge, using Chapter...
Route 10.
Route 10.
The East Street Bridge. Okay.
That's the East Street Bridge, using Chapter 90 funds. And I, did I hear that you're saying that we should authorize your signature?
Yes, please.
So that amendments can be made? And you're assuring us, then I'll go ahead and make that amendment. Joy, if you're willing to second that?
I will second it.
All right. Any further questions on this? All right. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No. All right. Hearing none? That passes. All right. Thank you. All right. Revenue and expenditure updates. Any comments, questions that we have on? Yeah, I had a couple too somewhere. I forgot what they were.
I'll go do it.
No, no, you're fine.
I had one somewhere, I guess. And since Ian is here, this might even be good. So I'm just curious, on the expense one, on the regional lockup assessment, I know that eventually we didn't need that, right? They paid for it themselves or something?
We paid for it. They refunded our money because the state budget wasn't approved until after. So that has to be an adjustment.
That's an adjustment. So that's why it's showing negative? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we had mentioned that before. And on the same page, the gas plumbing expenses, it seems to be overspent by $228 already, which?
A lot.
Gas plumbing expenses?
Yes. I've already notified, Ron, that I can't expend any more money out of that. Because the state didn't do any training in '20, they required the gas and plumbing inspectors to do more training than is usually required for this fiscal year.
Someone else have some questions?
I already answered the question about the CARES Act. But again, since Chief O'Leary is here, you know, we have right now in cannabis funds, I think it's $14 or something, $14 or $16?
Eighteen, I think.
Yeah. And I just wanted to, if that's not expended in this fiscal year, does that get added to the free cash amount? Does that carry over?
That's, that would be extra revenue, so it would be part of the free cash calculation.
So at some point, I think I mentioned this before, you were going to ask our police chief if there was an impact, because it's supposed to be impacted?
Actually, you got to ask Fire Chief, Police Chief, Inspection Services.
Right.
Yeah.
What kind of impact? But I just don't want to forget that I think that, you know, whether it be the schools, the Board of Health, the Police Department, there should be some allotment of funds to do some education.
Right. And don't forget, this is the sales tax. This isn't...
Right. It's not even the, what's the one-time fee? Is it $15,000?
Well, let's see. We've got, I think there's...
You've got a quarterly payment in here now.
There's a quarterly impact fee, and then there's, I forget what the heck, $10,000.
$10,000.
Right.
That's the one that's supposed to go towards the education. But I just don't want to forget that these funds are there. We want to make, we can use it how we want. I think that's the way the host agreement was written?
Yeah. The, both the impact fee and the other $10,000 annual fee would go into two different account numbers, just so...
Right. Keep them separate.
I'll keep them straight of what's what.
But I just want to make sure that we do some education. We have a nursery school or daycare center right there. I just think it would be useful, helpful between police, Board of Health, even seniors, to be honest with you. Some of the towns are using it to educate seniors. So anyway, just wanted to make sure we don't let that fall away.
No, I think we'll get that on an agenda to have some sort of planning meeting here to talk about how we can go ahead and spend that. I mean, the sales tax is one thing, but we do have another $10,000 or something added to it since our last meeting, I think, here, based on the first...
I don't know if it was since the last meeting or not, but we did get a, the second quarterly, which was like $14,000.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that's money that can be put toward educational purposes, right? If I'm not mistaken?
I think the way it was written was it's that $10,000, that is, for three years. And then the other is the impact, which theoretically would be, if, you know, is increased police controls or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll have to figure out a way and a means to start doing a little bit of planning about how that might be used and who would take the lead on that. Okay. Very good. Any other comments, questions about revenue expenditure?
Well, just, I'm going to make my same plea, but maybe I'll reword it this time. I don't want to see these reports. These reports don't mean anything. They're not accurate on what's coming to us. What's before us right now shows revenue of 11 million and expenses of 13 million. So we're deficit nine, about $900,000, which I know is not accurate. But if we can't get the budget numbers in here, then there's no sense in looking at revenue, because unless I happen to remember what our entire property taxes are, I can't tell you whether we're halfway there or not. And with this report, this is January 8th, so, you know, you figured the last quarterly should have been coming in. It's just, it's paper, it's information, it's numbers, it's feel-good stuff. And I know the town accountant is doing his best to catch up and get there, but I almost wish we just put a pause on this for 30 days to let them catch up and do their thing. And then perhaps we get to a spot where we can give direction and say, if six months into the year, the account is more than 50% overdrawn, add a column, make a comment. But, you know, because we're asking the same questions every two weeks, so it stays fresh in our mind. And...
It's really the revenue. It's just recording. It's not a projection, it's not a budget, you know? It's not expenditure to budget. It's pretty useless, frankly.
It just shows that we're at 100% all the time, and we have no yardstick to measure where we are, then we really don't know.
And I completely understand that this is not new. This is just how it had been done in the past. So this is nothing to do with the current town accountant or the current situation we're in. It's just, I think it's, I mean, I can't opine on any of this. We're trying to do this blindly, and it's on the agenda every two weeks. So, you know, everyone at home thinks we're looking at this, and we are, but, you know...
We're still going to be talking about closing out of 2021, right? So obviously, we need the revolving accounts updated, and we need the revenue accounts updated. Until we get that, all we're seeing is a recording of what has happened, but there's no percentage of the budget.
So I would, you know, Madam Chair, it's your committee, but I would respectfully suggest that perhaps you allow the, I mean, Ellen can continue to send hers out as she does, and we're copied on that, so we could see it. But for the agenda purposes, maybe just hold it for 30 days.
Both revenue and expenditure, or just...
Yeah. Because in March, I'd rather come back and say, and hear an update on, which we may, it may be coming up on the agenda. You know, this is where we are with the outside services. They have started, and we're making this progress. And here's how much longer we think we need to go. You know, those type updates, then, you know, I feel like we just continue to harp on the same thing right now, that it couldn't get fixed, even if we wanted to right now.
This is a longstanding issue, John. Long before this year.
In terms of revenue report, especially?
So, Ed, jumping down, closeout, what is the timetable for that? And that has to happen before these accounts can be updated, and we can get into a better pattern of...
I mean, on the revenue side, as long as we can find the time, we can go back and enter what we had used for estimated revenues and those at any time.
Budget, yeah.
So we have, we've got, we've generated estimated revenues for all of these things, right?
Well, we passed the budget.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about, right, Ed?
Right.
The budget.
But there's no accounting of what's expenditure, percentage of that sort of thing. It's all just, this is what we got, and it's 100% of what we got. It just doesn't make any sense.
And earlier, Ed, you alluded, you suggested that you guys, your primary focus right now is still closing out the documents required to get free cash certified?
Right.
Right? That, so, and I think that should remain the number-one priority. Number two or number three behind that, because I don't know what all the other items are off the top of my head. But somewhere, this should come in. I don't think the current work, in my view, of these outside consultants helping get the forms done, the certified free cash should be paused or delayed to make this piece happen. But it'd be nice if this piece happened by March 1st, or the second week of March, or something like that, or have some sort of update. So then we can start looking at the whole picture. I just don't want to derail the free cash piece.
Well, I find the expenditure report to be helpful, but to be honest, with either revenue and the revolving accounts are somewhat useless to look at.
And we can still get them from Ellen in the email. It just, we won't take up 30 minutes in the meeting unless there's something there that needs to be discussed.
Well, the expense reports do have the budget in there. So you have, you have a yardstick in that one. It's the revenue, and how do you, you know, deal with the discrepancy? And that's information we need to have in order to have some reasonable conversations about it.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we could continue to have the expense report and/or the revenue report sent out to us just by email, as usual, not put it on the agenda item until probably maybe our second meeting in March, as a revenue and expenditure report, allowing time?
Because that'd be six weeks out, so in hopes that...
That would allow the closeout of...
To make this all fit.
Most of the closeout of '21, hopefully to have happened by that point in time? Does that sound reasonable, Ed?
Well, that way, I mean, if there's some aberration that we see on the electronic version, we can still raise it at this meeting. It doesn't mean we're uninformed, it just means that we're not going to use the time to look at these numbers again.
To fully discuss this.
Yeah.
All right. I understand. All right. So, okay. Is that agreeable to everyone? Everybody clear?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Valid suggestion. Moving on. Next, ARPA funds update. Ed, you attended a new webinar, apparently?
Yes. I actually attended a webinar this afternoon, put on by the MMA on the final rule. I did find it extremely helpful as, and in the final rule, the Treasury has, I will say, given a lot more latitude to towns and cities than probably what we have seen before. And one of probably the biggest changes, and it may be advantageous to us, is they're actually allowing a one-time standardized take on loss of revenue of $10 million. Now, we can't take $10 million, because we're only getting 1.8, but we could theoretically put in for the 1.8 million all in loss in revenue, and then go forward. And it gives us a little bit more flexibility in actually how we spend some of those funds. You can still spend it on the capital items and what have you, but I can't say the categories are broader, but it's a lot easier as far as reporting goes and the caveats of how you utilize the funding.
How can we justify 1.8 million in loss of revenue?
Yeah. What's that?
How do we justify $1.8 million in loss of revenue?
We don't have to anymore. That's...
Under $10 million, just declare it.
Up to $10 million, you just declare it.
Yeah. You don't have to itemize.
Which was not the case with...
Free cash will look good.
Yeah. Which was, well, I mean, there's still restrictions under either one, is you can't use it to put into your stabilization fund, you can't use it to pay into your OPEB or pension funds, you cannot use it to pay down debt, you know, what have you. But like I say, it's a major change from what was in the interim final rule, shall you say, where, yes, it was onerous calculations to get to, you know, anything for a loss of revenue.
So this is kind of like a standard deduction or something?
Yeah.
I mean, rather than an itemized reporting?
Exactly.
It might be easier on reporting, for sure.
But, you know, they went over, you know, the premium pay, and they do, they do want it tied somewhat to a, well, I won't say somewhat, to a dollar and cent equivalent of up to $13 on someone's pay. They have broadened the category of the individuals that actually qualify for that essential work category, so. And the MMA got the slide deck up very quickly on their website, so I printed them out for all of your information.
So this is basically information for tonight. We don't have any decisions to make for tonight?
No, absolutely none.
Just reading information?
Yep. That's all.
What's the survey timetable?
Working on it. We had said that we were going to hold it out until, I think, the 14th or 15th of February. We're at about, last time I looked, we were at around 485 responses, so it's okay. It's been trickling in the last few days. I'd really rather see, you know, 600 is kind of my hopeful goal. I'm hoping we can get a few more people to respond. But we've tried to remind people in a variety of ways, and, you know, I don't know how else we can reach out. There's supposed to be an article, keep an eye out, there's supposed to be an article in the Gazette. I haven't seen it myself, but they wanted information about it about two weeks ago, and I haven't seen an article appear as yet, but maybe it will be out.
There was an article about the ARPA funds, about Holyoke, and they're supporting some businesses. And I'm just, makes me wonder, I mean, certainly we've had businesses that have been negatively impacted by this, and I'm wondering, have they, are you aware of their access to other funds?
I'm not, but there's, when I last looked, and this was probably about, what, two, three weeks ago, there were very few businesses that had obviously responded to the business question that says, are you a business owner? So I actually asked Joy if she would help out and sort of get the word out to other businesses in town.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to be sure that they are seeing it as well, and would, you know, respond to the whole survey, obviously. But there were a couple of questions in there that are business-related. But, so, yeah, I don't know, I mean, there were, I mean, that was more under the CARES Fund, there were some business allocations items there, but I don't know, you know, anything else besides this right here. It seems like there's lots of different pots of ARPA money, though, right? I mean, the municipalities have theirs, the school may have theirs, I mean, everybody's got kind of different pieces of ARPA.
I'm just wondering if businesses have been able to access much in the way of health, because clearly there are plenty of businesses that have been negatively impacted. And Holyoke, I think, specified hospitality businesses that they were supporting.
Yeah. And actually, with this final rule, they'll even allow municipalities to support through ARPA funds, nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, I think Holyoke just gave $4 million out to multiple nonprofits within the survey. And then Springfield's doing the same thing.
Yeah. Good.
Well, one of the things, too, that I'd like to see, I've seen it in a couple of other towns, and I mentioned it to Ed, as we get around to closing out the survey, analyzing whatever it's telling us, and then getting around to making some real decisions about the ARPA money, I would like to see us have some level of a, not necessarily an application form, but some sort of form to write out who's requesting it, what's it for, how much, et cetera, that we all kind of sign off on. I mean, I think, I think we need a level of visibility here and transparency, and I would feel better, even going back to the ones that we have approved for the BOH and a couple of these others, document that, so that we're going forward and we know exactly what we've agreed to spend on ARPA. So I found a couple of forms in other towns that are using, so I'll draft, I mean, I'll get those out for Ed to look at, and maybe we can modify them for our use if at all possible.
And we also, I also mentioned to Board of Health, Jerry and I were just talking about this, about the distribution of them, that it should be, I mean, now you can get them through the federal government, that, you know, the message should be that these were purchased, you know, through the town for the residents. You know, we need to get the word out that that's, you know...
Right. Yeah. Ian, you have a question?
Hi.
Come on, yeah.
Ian O'Leary, Police Chief. Just to give you an update on the premium pay discussions through the department heads, we had a tentative meeting tomorrow. Our schedules just didn't line up, so we're going to try to meet on Monday, and hopefully try to at least have discussion, try to get on the agenda for the February 15th. try to at least have discussion, try to get on the agenda for the February 15th meeting, if that's possible for discussion, but just to give you an update on it.
Great, thank you. All right.
I think it's a great idea that there would be, like, for example, if the group that came to us tonight is interested in kind of accessing that money, that there'd be a form, a paper trail, that there would be, and I wonder if we should go back now and, you know, somehow have that documentation on the clinic and...
Yes, absolutely. No, no, I think we have to, I personally, yeah.
Because actually, one thing that came clearly out of today's meeting was that this is a grant, does not have to go through town meeting, however, in this form of government, the Select Board is the only approving body for the expenditures of these funds. And Sean Cronin was on from DOR, and he said there's, you know, basically two ways to do it. The Select Board can take the applications, vote on each one, or if they wanted to, and I'm not suggesting this or recommending this, is like, he said, the town manager or the town administrator can come forward with a number of them as recommendations, and then they can vote on them that way, but it is clear that the Select Board is the only, you know, required approving body to expend these funds.
Okay.
Well, I think we should have a standardized form that people can submit, and I think we should backtrack, and I'm happy to help with that, but I think we have to say, police detail, custodian, the clinic, you know, the test kits, like, let's not lose track of the whole piece of it.
What we've actually spent it on already, yep.
So are we, are we doing, are we doing all these expenses under a single line item that's under the Board of Selectmen versus just, you know, we approved 20,000 over the PD, so that we're looking in this bucket for this and that, for ease of accounting practices later on?
I believe we set up, at my direction, two accounts, one for, one for regular expenses and one for payroll expenses. I know we set up one at least, and I think it was two, but I'll go back and check that, but, yes.
Well, just thinking about CARES Act, and both of you are so invested in that process, is there anything we can learn from that in terms of the accounting?
Not to do it the same way.
Oh, yeah.
Not to do it the same way and have only two accounts with that kind of money?
Yeah, absolutely. It's signed, approved, here you go, you can spend it for this, there you go. And there, I mean, someone says, "Oh, I'm charging to that account for something different", and it's, "No, sorry, that's not approved."
Yeah, I think this has got to be a preapproval process, documented preapproval, personally.
Yeah.
I think there's enough money involved here. I mean, it was a nightmare with a half a million with CARES money to figure out where it was going at the right time, so. Anyway, I've got a couple towns that I've seen forms for, I'll get something up and we can put it on the next agenda and make a, make something that would work. Okay. Let's see, closeout of FY '21. We started talking about it, but Ed, maybe give us this idea of how the, that's going with Lisa, is her name, is that right?
It's coming along, it's a little slower than we might have originally thought, but she works with Bradley, and she actually had like an hour and a half Zoom meeting with him yesterday. In fact, I joined them for about half an hour on it, so it is going forward, and, you know, I'm kind of, well, I won't say I'm kind of, I'm definitely glad that Bradley is, well, Bradley and Jen are the two focal points, but Lisa's been explaining stuff along the way as she has asked questions, and either Bradley or I, or a combination of us have gotten information back to her for, whether it's transfers, journal entries, or what have you, because, you know, she'll go through and she'll tell them that, "Okay, I made this correction in fiscal year '21, but, you know, it was either charged wrong or the control accounts on the account were, might have been set up wrong or whatever," and she'll tell them that, "Okay, you'll have to go into the, you should go into the fiscal '22 and make this adjustment in there also." So it's a, it's a good learning process for Bradley also, so I'm hoping that as we've been moving forward, that we will be able to finish everything off by the end of February, you know, for the free cash calculation, submittals, and everything else.
Good. Well, that's encouraging, if we can do that. Perfect. Okay, anything else? All right. If no questions, let's move on to the designer selection process. We have a lot of designing tonight.
Budget process?
No, this one? Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Why don't I get a mark these higher? I'm checking them off as I go. Sorry, the budget process for FY '23, the update on that. The budget call went out, budgets were due in by the 15th, I believe, 14th, 15th?
Yep.
Of January? Where are we? Do we have any, do we have them in, is the question?
We've got a good portion of them in. Bradley sent me a list. These are the ones that have, he has received, Conservation Commission, Building Department, Assessors Department, Planning Board, Police Department, good job, Town Clerk, Council on Aging, Treasurer, Finance Committee, Library, Veterans, and Health Director. And then I'm going to send out an email to the ones that are missing, telling them that they need to get them in by the end of this week. I'm also going to take this, well, I'll take this list, and I'm going to have Bradley send the information that these departments have sent him, along to Vicki for the Finance Committee. I did speak with her this afternoon because she brought me in to sign PRF from last night's meeting, because she forgot to leave that in my mailbox, but she's going to take that and start setting up budget request meetings with those departments.
Okay. It sounds like we've got two of our largest departments that have not submitted.
Correct.
Okay.
Which are?
School and fire.
But school is exempt from that deadline.
Oh, no. Fire and highway. And I have, I have not submitted mine yet either.
Just...
Yeah, but fire and highway are not there, yeah.
But I, you know, I would suggest that, you know, when Ed sends out that reminder that, A, the deadline has already passed, and you have to have it in by whenever, Monday or Tuesday, if you don't, period, you're done, you're flat funded, moving on. Don't ask for any requests.
I was going to be worse than that.
I mean, but we got to keep the process moving.
There's the funding.
There you go.
Yeah, no, we got to keep it moving, absolutely, and I think that whatever you've got in already with Bradley, I mean, if you can get it to the Finance Committee, that will help them set up a schedule and then get going. I think, you know, John had talked about whether we might want to have some joint meetings at some point in time. I think we were thinking about maybe for the bigger committees, or the bigger departments, some of these others, I think it wouldn't hurt any of these that you just mentioned to be able to go before the, for the Finance Committee and plead their case, so, unless they don't want to do that, but, yeah, we'll let them organize that, okay. Good, all right, well, we'll keep on chugging on that. We definitely want to keep on a schedule, get on a schedule, get finance to create a schedule, especially for the hearings, and I know everybody's got a busy time, but whatever we can do to help facilitate that. Okay, now I will get to the designer selection process, whichever that was, model procedures.
And I will not take a lot of your time, it's here for information and for homework for the next meeting, but as we were going through and talking about either doing designer selection for some of these special projects, like the splash pad and...
Engineering studies?
Yeah, and the path, the walking path...
Bike path.
Or the bike path. And I have another idea, and I intend to actually issue an RFQ for on-call engineer services, that we would pick a number of companies from, just in general, to have them on call, and then as projects come up, they can be assigned to them under a separate contract. But one of the things that I seem to have found is the town has not adopted any designer selection procedures, which is actually a requirement of picking a designer for whether it's a, shall we say, public works project, which is basically horizontal, or a building project. So, these are the model procedures right off the state's website, so if you review them, I'm going to take these and make some edits to them that, and fill in what I think are the appropriate bodies and what have you, and bring it back to you at your next meeting. But we should have accepted and approved designer selection procedure process.
And again, this would be to be able to issue an RFP, an on-call RFP?
RFP or RFQ.
Okay. That would allow for us to group many different services, saying we've got a need for engineering services, or landscape services, or whatever they might be.
No, even if you didn't want to group them together, the town needs, should have these even if you're going out for...
For one, okay.
You know, for one.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that would allow us to do that. Okay, so you're going to tinker with this and bring us back something new next meeting?
Yes.
All right.
And this is for, and there's no money threshold?
No.
On any of this? Okay.
No.
I would just ask that you look at number 16, Ed, I just have questions about that.
What's that?
I just want, you know, when you're, when you give it back to us, if you could just, I'm just, I have questions about number 16. We don't have to discuss it now if you don't want, but I just don't know where the line is on that.
Compensated for services, preparing changes.
Compensated for services.
That should have been anticipated by the designer.
It just doesn't seem like it's clear cut.
Yeah, I would say that's, this is the language right off the state IG's office.
Okay. Well, we'll let you work on this one.
That protects us, I see that.
What's that?
Yeah.
I see it protecting us.
It's protecting, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe we'd have to go to litigation, I mean, it just seems like...
Right, you're still going to have to, in some way, prove that that should have been, you know, reasonably anticipated.
Yeah, I agree. Exactly. Sure, I agree with you.
Sure, no problem. All right, so we'll see that come back around at us with more detail, something that we can look at and hopefully approve, vote on and approve, all right? Very good. All right, any other business that cannot wait until the next regular meeting on February 15th?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just, do we have an update on the request for a one-year from our Lance and Heath for the audit?
All right.
Actually, I did get that back after the agenda was posted, so she, Tanya sent me a one-year and a three-year, so hang on, I'll be right back.
Okay. Thanks for asking that.
That's what I'm here for.
Yes.
And thanks for mentioning, you know, anyway.
Yeah. All right, then we'll be moving into the PCFs, okay?
Yeah, with those, I was thinking we'd just kind of take them as groups as we go down.
Big group, yeah.
Yeah.
And Council on Aging is the only one that's broken up, and we'll just hit that twice, just to keep the flow going.
Right. You and I read this the same way.
Well, the first two or three are going to be individuals, right?
Yes, they'll be individuals, and the rest is like a group.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, I misread that completely.
Me, too.
Sounds good. And do you have this, you know, Ed must have the PRF then, from last night? He said Vicki dropped it off, so that's what we'll have to sign.
Yeah.
We'll have to sign that.
You know who it was?
The PRF from last night, for the COA.
The original.
Program, according to the original, to sign.
Oh.
Yeah, the original, so, that's fine.
I'm pretty sure that's my signature there.
Yeah, no, that's you, but, no, we were looking for finance.
People are going to think the...
We're still here.
It froze or something.
We're here. We should jump up and down.
We should start doing commercials with this movie.
Yeah, everybody, don't forget to take the ARPA survey if you haven't done that already.
There you go.
Free advice, free advice.
Like this on Facebook.
Yeah.
And don't forget, there's a vaccine clinic at Norris School on Saturday.
Yeah, exactly. Got to.
We need members for the bylaws committee.
And many others. Many others. Openings on PQB, on finance, yeah?
Yeah. At this point, you don't even, you don't have to come on the committee, just pull papers and run for the offices. Elections are, what, three months?
Yeah. Oh, one thing I would add, thanks to East Hampton Media, they ran a PSA about our ARPA survey, so they basically took the blurb that was written up, and they've recorded it, and there's a PSA running on Channel 191 about the survey, too, so we've tried many ways to get the word out, so hopefully people will deal with it, and if you can't do it online, there's plenty of hard copies, both in the Town Clerk's office, at the COA, and especially at the library for easy access, so. Let it disappear. Here you go. Go ahead.
So year one, which is fiscal year '21, would be $36,000 if it, either standalone or in a three-year proposal. Year two, which would be fiscal year '22, would be $31,000, and fiscal year '23 would be $32,000.
Thirty-six, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Yes. And the year one is high because they are anticipating that they'll have to do more work just from what they know from doing this one. And if it's less onerous than what they thought, they would obviously charge us that, but they are anticipating that they'll need to spend some more time here on fiscal year '21.
And we talked, right, about possibly doing just a one-year, and then later on going out for bid competition on a three-year contract? I believe that's how we left it, kind of, the other night, maybe?
Yeah. So I think the, I think one of our other issues, right, is isn't there a current bylaw that says we won't award more than one year?
Oh.
Right?
We will, or won't?
We won't, we're not permitted without a town vote to approve a contract beyond one year. Maybe, maybe not.
Is that true?
We'll look at that.
Really?
Yeah. So I would propose that we accept the three-year offer at year one at $36,000, our option to agree to year two and year three sequentially. So basically, we're agreeing to three one-year contracts, and we can exercise them at that. If they're acceptable to the terminology based on our bylaw, either way, the one year's $36,000. Whether we sign the three-year or we do the one year, it's $36,000. We do that with our sole option to renew for the second year and the third year pending subsequent votes.
This is deja vu from John Martin three years ago.
Well, it keeps us...
Yeah, he wanted an escape clause, I know that.
And they wouldn't allow it.
And they wouldn't allow it.
Yeah, I mean, that's why,
I mean, the theory is there's a bylaw, so we can't vote beyond the one-year without violating a bylaw of town, which we all took an oath not to do.
I guess the part that I was concerned about in terms of your motion had to do with pending a second vote.
Yeah.
I would say pending,
Well, so my thought on that, and why I brought that up, is because I don't believe one sitting body can take a vote that compels a future elected body to hold that. But if I'm wrong on that too,
Of course you can. Why can't you?
We do it all the time.
Jeez.
Well, if you sign a three-year contract, yes, but we're signing a one-year saying we'll, you know. To keep it simple, I mean, I'll make it a one-year contract, and then we can, we do a one-year contract, and then we go out to bid, and then we bring it to town meeting, and get town vote to approve a three-year.
Can I just ask you this, Ed? I don't, I think we're happy with this company. I have questions about why it's gonna be more this particular year. I heard everything that was said, but I still am not convinced that it, for some reason FY '21 is automatically gonna be $5,000 more. But I obviously think, you know, '31 and '32 and the subsequent years are worth locking into, so what do we need to do to lock into that and still be consistent with our bylaw? What procedure is needed?
Do we need to change the bylaw?
That's what I've recommended to the,
Not tonight, but by May.
By law, you know, by law committee before, you know, well earlier.
How can we have a seven- or nine-year contract with Charter?
Whatever, whatever happened back then, yeah. So, I mean, is the idea, though, I mean, if we did a one-year contract, you know, vote to approve an idea of a one-year contract right now, certainly while that contract is ongoing, we can go back out for
Other bids.
Other bids, and then still do a third year while this one year's ongoing.
I would draw my motion and replace it with a motion to approve the one-year contract at $36,000, and in the interim, seek approval at town meeting for the second and third year. So, we get the one-year going, they're working on that now. Between now and town meeting, if we go out to bid, we do, if not, whatever. But we need the vote of the town meeting, which, as the auditor does, they should understand that piece.
Can't we just say that we're gonna agree to a three-year contract pending town meeting approval for year two and three?
So that means we're not,
Because then we set up with Melanson that they're going to be doing a three-year contract.
And we're not going out for any, any level of competition?
You could, you could, but would Melanson Heath move forward, not knowing what the town meeting's gonna vote?
They may, in this particular case.
All right, so I will draw my motion and wait for,
Okay, can you explain to me why it's gonna be $5,000 more for FY '21? What, I know, I heard what they said, I know the internal controls, I know the adding, the getting caught up. From their standpoint, by the time they came in to do an audit, one would hope that all that would be done. So why is it costing $5,000 more for year one?
Because they know, to a certain extent, that they are going to have to go through those and take a little more time looking at them because of the fact that, okay, you've got, number one, basically, a financial team entering them, but you've got another entity that has adjusted them.
But we thought by getting this other team coming in, Kershaf, that this was going to be a step ahead in our favor. It sounds like it's a step in the other direction if they've gotta go back in and verify that CPA firm's work, rather than our basic account.
Well, if you didn't, we didn't do that, it would probably be even higher than $36,000.
Can you remind me what the previous contract was for the three years?
It was only '21.
I think they, I can't remember if they're level funded or not, but I believe it was $25,000.
Twenty-one, I thought.
Ooh.
Wouldn't it, for the audit? I don't remember. I mean, for one year was, I thought it was twenty-one, but anyway, it's, yeah, it's quite a bit more.
Look at the expense report, it's still twenty-one.
Yeah, it's quite a bit more. So, I mean, from what I'm hearing, though, nobody is, right now, in favor of saying that we do anything else but Melanson and Heath, that we're not necessarily going out for any, any kind of competitive quote for year two, three, or if it's a three-year contract, maybe four. Is that what I'm hearing?
Twenty-one, five.
Right.
Wow.
So twenty-one, five to thirty-six is quite a chunk.
Twenty-one, five for the past year, or?
Twenty-one, five for this past,
For three straight years?
I don't know what the two previous years were.
It's been around, certainly, my tally on here, it's easily twenty-one was last year, I think, too. So, I think it's been somewhere in that neighborhood.
And here's Tanya's comment. "I realize these are large increases over the fees for the town's audit these past few years. Continued investments in staffing, technology, and knowledge resources are necessary for an efficient and effective organization. These investments are essential for Melanson to continue its commitment to provide quality and timely services. The recent coronavirus pandemic and changing public policy have left many companies and industries facing a labor shortage. Our company and our industry are not immune. The CPA industry has experienced a highly competitive labor market. Looking ahead, the outlook for the supply of new accounting staff is unpromising as enrollment in colleges and universities has declined significantly. In order to retain our staff, we have had to provide significant salary increases. Over the years, our fees have generally remained stable. We now find it necessary to align our hourly rates with the salaries we must pay. Due to increased costs for salaries and benefits and the decrease in available staffing resources, we have increased our hourly rates effective July 1st, 2021, and our fixed engagement fees need to be adjusted accordingly. We appreciate your understanding and support in allowing us to maintain the high standard you expect from Melanson."
Did they mention what their new hourly rate is?
No.
And when I talked to them over, when we were looking for, when we were looking for candidates for accounting and so forth, and when I spoke with them, I mean, that was the story, that, the conversation that we had, that it's so difficult to find accountants, period, for their, their business, let alone for our town.
But a $10,000, uh,
That's a $15,000 increase.
$15,000 increase in one year.
Yes.
I think we should ask for a couple of other quotes.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion? What are we doing, guys?
Well, how long do we have to sign and return this?
I mean, we're already late on the '21 audit.
We don't.
Some towns have already completed their '21 audit.
What's our budget for the audit right now?
Twenty-one, five.
Twenty-one, five.
Wow.
So how do we take, how do we undertake an audit before the May town meeting, if we don't have money to pay for it? Can we?
We move money at the end, I guess.
We have to move money at the end, yeah.
I'm serious.
Did you say?
Is there any way?
ARPA.
ARPA? I don't, I don't know any other, any other place to go for money.
Well, okay, there isn't. So, I mean, because most towns have already, they've been working, if not finished, their '21 audit, we were expecting our '21 books to be closed by early March, is that what we said? End of February, early March?
End of February, you just said.
End of February.
End of February. So, could they, I mean, how would we sign a contract with them if we don't have $36,000 in hand?
We'll have to find some money to transfer in there.
Which we cannot do until May, right?
Right, unless we can use ARPA funds, which I'm not sure of at this point.
Okay. But would that, I guess my question is, would that allow them to start the audit before the town meeting, or not? They would have to wait until the town meeting and appropriating that extra money?
Well, we wouldn't wait for the town meeting. We'd put it through as a departmental, we'd have to find it somewhere and put it through as a departmental transfer, beginning of May, well, same time.
I would tell Melanson that it's not really good accounting practices to deficit spend, so therefore, we'll give you twenty-one, five. And if the town approves an additional $15,000, then we'll pay them.
Yikes. All right, I think, I got lost in terms of where we are. I think we had a motion, and we got it, we sent it a couple of times.
Yeah.
Let's vote on the one-year contract and see what we wanna do, the one-year first. Let's just take that one by itself, right now. So we have a proposal out here for $36,000 from Melanson. Do we wanna make that a motion, that we keep on with Melanson and Heath and engage in a one-year arrangement with them? Other options to be decided?
Well, I think, under discussion, I know there's not a motion pending, but I don't know how I reconcile approving a deficit spend. So, you know, I was oblivious to it until somebody pointed out it was twenty-one, five, so now I know about it. So I can't vote for that, because that's an illegal act. And I can't vote for more than one year, because that's an illegal act, so. My hands are tied, I mean, I don't know, and I'm open to suggestions, and somebody talk me through one of these things, but.
I mean, and even if there were a bylaw change, which I think the bylaw committee could take that up, but again, that can't get approved until May.
Well, that's, that would settle the three-year issue, right? But even just on the one-year issue, it's how, because we got twenty-one, five in the lineup, and we probably have five, we still have the $5,000 in the reserve fund. I call it the reserve fund, but the finance, what's my call of fund, emergency fund?
Five or two?
Two. No, no, two thousand.
Two.
Two thousand in reserve fund, that I'm sure of.
Let me ask a question. The company that did the closing of the books, it's Eric, what?
Kincher.
Kincher.
Kincher. So the town approved money, was it?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars for closing the books for 2021, right?
Right.
And there is a portion of the ARPA funds that does say that, I mean, this is basically saying that it's gonna, because of our circumstances, which were related to staffing and so forth, is there a justification? I'm being serious now about, does this qualify for ARPA funds because of our unusual circumstances? And is it?
If we were hiring a CPA to work for us and be our employee, I would say yes.
Yeah.
This is in the gray area, I'll have to, I'll have to go take a look at.
Okay.
Well, and if we couldn't do anything until May, I mean, we would still be earlier than we've been this year, right?
Well, that's, that's just vote to approve it. They're still gonna need, you know, four to six months to do the,
You wanted a solution, I mean, what can I say? I don't know.
So maybe, maybe we add a third item to next Tuesday's agenda
Okay, which is?
To give Ed time to research and see if, if there's a solution to one of these issues.
All right. And do you think there's, there's no negotiating with Melanson and Heath on this first-year cost?
I don't think so.
And we obviously can't use the other firm because they were involved in closing the books, are there other options?
Right.
Right.
Are there other options through state or any other?
Well, there are other firms out there, it's just a question of, would they even be interested?
Yeah.
Right.
And I would just, off the cuff, I would just expect that a new firm coming in that's blind is going to charge
Even more.
Even more, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I would, I would think that you, there's an advantage to stick with what you know and who knows us as well, so.
Why can't, why can't there be a request, if we do decide to go with this, that there be quarterly payments on this contract? I mean, why, why does it say that we have to be in this hole here, where we're gonna come up with $36,000 when we budgeted twenty-one, five?
But the point is more that you can't, you shouldn't sign a contract even, if you don't have the money. It's not a matter of when you fork out the money, you shouldn't even sign a contract for thirty-six when we know we only have twenty-one, five, plus maybe two thousand in reserve.
Because they don't bill you the twenty-one, five.
They'll bill as they, you know, as they go.
They bill you as they go along, anyway.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's really the kicker.
But that payment would come out of next year's budget.
Second, next year's budget is what I was saying, I'm not saying that we're gonna, you know,
We'd have to put it in next year's budget.
Get a payment above what we budgeted for, they should, they should understand the circumstances that we're in relative to what we've budgeted for the audit.
Right. I mean, yeah, well, depending on when they started, I mean, there would be some payment, I would think, out of this, this current year budget.
I mean, we could probably, But not the full thirty-six.
No, not the full thirty-six, no, absolutely not.
I mean, that, I don't know if that's a viable solution that they would agree to, but if we agreed to the thirty-six thousand, but only twenty-one, five could come out of this fiscal year.
I mean, within, you know, once they got going and then,
I think it's definitely worth asking. I mean, if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna overspend and you can't do more than one year, I mean,
Because if we do any of these, they're gonna cite us for it.
All right, exactly. Even if we ask in the bill of the next fiscal year.
We've had three-year contracts with them for years.
For work they did in this fiscal year.
Right. All right. I, I would like to suggest, then, that we, you know, not belabor this, we've talked about positives and negatives here, but we do have an executive session next week, that we do a little bit more research in terms of whether ARPA could be used. Bylaws committee could take a look at the bylaw and see how complicated that would be to change. Again, that would not be able to be official or approved if it were changed,
They're on, they're on.
Until the May town meeting, right?
Well, May town meeting, it's a bylaw, send it to the attorney general's office, three more months.
Two, three months, right, yeah. But,
But it still should be done.
It's something, yeah. But at least a look at it on the, on the bylaw committee, to see what's, you know, if it's, if it's one place that it's mentioned, or if it's a whole thing around it, I don't even remember what it looked like, so we'll take a look at that, maybe, Francine?
And if we have to, we have to talk about operational stabilization, or we can talk about the possibility of having a contract with Melanson that allows a two-payment system for one of the first year.
So, and then, Ed, would you be able to go back to Melanson and just explain our dilemma here? Why we're, why we're
Sure.
Confused about this thirty-six, given what we budgeted, and we don't want a deficit spend, and we're stuck until, any kind of transfer, really, until May.
Don't be afraid to tell them we're not happy about thirty-six either.
She already got that impression from me, so.
Yeah, really? Okay, guys.
Rocking the hard place.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, John.
Oh, no problem. Want to be clear.
Is there any other business? No, all right. Okay, are we ready for some PCFs and PRFs and whatever here? Okay, I think we are.
We are.
All right, I think we have a, go ahead.
I was just thinking I'd kinda do these in groups or clumps as they go along. The first ones would be individual, then as we get to some of these other sections, so.
Go for it.
First one is, I'll make a motion to approve a PRF for a program coordinator, new position, part-time, non-benefited, partially funded by the grant fund. The pay scale for the post-seen range is $17 to $20 per hour. That's on the council on aging.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right.
And that is a variety of funding sources.
Yeah, I think there's multiple grants, right? Is that not?
Right, right, right.
I think it's three.
Yeah, okay. And some, some existing money within the budget for the person who just left.
Right, and the job, the job description was reviewed, approved, and modified slightly.
Okay.
There is an interim in that position, right now. Some of the funds are being used to support that.
Okay. Anyway, okay, we have a motion.
No, there's, there's nobody in the program coordinator.
No, I'm just saying, but some of the funds with the position are being used in,
From the other position.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All aye? All right, thank you, approved.
Next is the treasurer collector's office. This is a PCF for, to reappoint for another two-week emergency, Robin Richard Admin Clerk, emergency, part-time, non-benefited position at a range of $19.25, up to $15, fifteen hours per week. The committee met, the committee ultimately approved this after a lengthy discussion with verbiage back to the department head that we would not approve a third two-week appointment for an emergency, that,
Why aren't they just doing an interim?
I don't believe,
Twelve weeks.
I don't believe anybody's applied yet. I think they're going through the process of the posting and all that, but they haven't had any applicants.
No, but I mean, Rob, why do a second emergency two-week as opposed to Robin just being in the position for an interim if they've already exceeded the two-week period?
Because I don't believe this person, well, the twelve weeks is gonna be at $17.00 and some odd cents.
Yeah.
Positioning does not pay this.
This $19.25 is there.
Is it the same dollar amount that we discussed last time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to
Approve for the two weeks.
Approve a two-week emergency appointment for Robin Richard to work in the treasurer collector's office. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we have any policy or anything that says the amount of, Do we have any policy or anything that says the amount of times an emergency appointment is allowed?
From what I could find in the handbook, the handbook was silent on it.
Okay. But PQB said not a third time. You.
Correct, we, yeah, it was a lengthy, Department Head was not present. It was just the three members of the Department Head, and we kind of took our guidance from the former Treasurer who's on the board of past practices, but we couldn't find anything in the book.
Okay.
Let me just, on that, about the third thing, just chime in a little bit on it, and I actually talked to Jen about this, and number one, I don't know if the individual will be interested in a third term or not if it came to that, but we actually, Jen came to me and asked if she should go, move forward asking for a second two-week term due to some of the comments at the previous select board meeting. And she went through the items, and alternative, Judy might have been willing to go over there and do this. However, Robin's very well-trained, Judy would come from square one. The other piece of this puzzle is the administrative clerk, due to handling the money, is bonded. It's $250 bond. The generous insurance company that we actually bond through allowed a one-time transfer to Robin for $20. The next time we put anyone in this position different than Robin, whether it's a two-week emergency, or an interim, or a permanent, it's another $250 new bond. So I, knowing that, I was the one that actually encouraged Jen to move forward with at least this second two-week appointment. And if it, it's such a busy time of year, if it came to a push comes to shove of a third two-week appointment due to those same parameters, and she hadn't gotten any real interest on for applications, I might lobby both boards for a third two-week appointment. That's my two cents worth.
Going forward on an eventual replacement in that position, we'd have to bond that person and put out the 250 anyway, won't we?
Yes, we will. And I just think from, you know, if I step back and put on my PPP hat on, the fact that it was just the three board members dealing with this, and then the question was raised, can we even do a second two-week emergency appointment? I think the board was leaning, you should just move to the 12-week, and if the person only has to stay for two or three weeks, because you find somebody, you're covered for 12 weeks. The issue was, based on feedback from our last meeting, was I couldn't represent whether or not the select board would go along with the increased hourly wage should it, should it be moved out to 12 weeks? So.
Because it's currently budgeted at 17 and a quarter or something.
At 30, I think 30 hours.
Right.
So.
Well, I think at this point in time, we've got the two-week emergency ahead of us, let's, let's move on that so that they aren't stalled for the next two weeks, at least.
There's a motion and a second.
I think we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of a two-week emergency appointment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Next, we have PCF for a windy ISO patrol officer, new hire, full-time, benefited, police department, 37 and a half hours, step-one probationary, 24.02, as in accordance with the CBI.
Okay.
And this is to fill the existing budgeted vacancy.
And this is a 40-hour-a-week position, right?
37.5.
Is it pronounced IOZO?
An admin shift.
Oh, 37, yeah.
IOZO?
IOZO, okay. 37.5, yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, and I would just add, I believe this particular individual, as the chief has indicated before, is already certified, trained, ready to go, wouldn't have to do.
She had a short break in service. She meets the criteria to still be a full-time police officer, she just has to do some online training to meet her qualifications.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
I'm assuming that all these, I mean, I just stayed last night to the Finance Committee for the COA thing. Were all these approved by Finance last night?
PCFs don't go to Finance.
Just PRS.
Oh, 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 yeah, PRF was, yeah.
All right, and a couple more that are out of the grouping, yeah, thanks, Ian.
Ian?
Next one, Jen?
Next, we have from the Assessor's Office, PCF to continue additional hours for the Assessor's Office, not to exceed 16 hours per week for another 12 weeks, beginning February 5th through April 28th, four additional hours per week. Town accountant has done a calculation, which is on the back of the original. PPP approved, approve this as presented, recommends that we pass it, I so move.
And just, okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and then just clarification on the note at the bottom, that funds are not available in the admin assistant line?
I think on the back of the original, he does a full calculation, it's going to have to be transferred from the vacant principal spot.
Okay.
So assuming that transfer happens in May, there's enough money within the department.
There's money within the budget.
Assesses the budget.
Okay, all right, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, no opposed?
So we have a PC, sorry, PCF resignation from the Highway Department, effective February 3rd, 2022, for a highway laborer.
Let's announce the name of the person.
Andrew.
Caravoo.
Caravoo, Caravoo.
All right. Last working date, January 30.
January 30, 2022.
All right. Okay, so a motion on the floor?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor as accepting the resignation?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. No opposed, all right.
Now, next, we have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight election workers. All of them are to bring their last paid wages, whatever their hourly rate was, up to the current 14.25. Somewhere at 12, somewhere at, I think, 12.90. So, Teresa Chavir.
Previere.
Previere, I'm the wrong person to do this. Lucinda Palmer, Jessica Nieswinder, Mary Robinson, Joanne Marie Pereira, Virginia Hartley.
Huntley.
Huntley. Ellen Hamel.
Eileen Hamel, yeah.
Eileen Hamel. And Jody Corey.
Okay. And so this would be effective, retroactive to January 1st?
Correct.
To bring them all up to the 14.25 hourly rate for election.
And again, these are all just election workers, there's no wardens in this group.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next.
Council on Aging, Florence Collins, Volunteer Coordinator, employee changed to bring her up to the minimum wage, effective January 1st, 2022, going from 13.77 to 14.25 per hour.
Okay. All right, motion on the floor, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I believe we have four for the library, all minimum wage adjustments. Barbara Thompson, Cynthia Lucier, Doris Hurd, Emily Munska.
And again, retroactive to January 1st? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And I believe that completes all the employees in the town that need to be adjusted for minimum wage.
I think so, I think it does, yeah, very good.
Yes, that should.
That's everybody, yeah, very good. Okay, I'll get there. Okay, next. All right, we don't have any permits, no warrants. Getting down to the end here, other documents requiring signature, so this was the charge for the Public Safety Committee. Ed, you just wanted us, this is something we had proposed and voted on, I think, before, but we needed to sign it, is that what you're asking for?
Correct.
Do we need to review this, folks, do we want to?
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions.
Okay. Given that you're our delegate to the committee, go for it.
Do you need it?
Do you have it?
Yeah, I just, I actually made notes on my electronic version, so on the agenda, it came in after.
Before the minutes.
Right.
Before that, it's him.
Or after all this.
And the clean one I edited was on the left-hand side of your yellow packet.
Your packet, yeah.
All right, I'm just getting past all these PCFs. Okay, I found it. Okay, just a couple of edits. Where it says, "All minutes and records", I think it should say, "Shall be recorded".
It does.
Oh, the one I have doesn't.
Take the one from the left-hand side of your yellow packet?
Oh, no, thank you.
You're welcome, yes, I did some further.
Oh, okay.
All right. So where was that reading though?
Shall be recorded.
Yeah, so it's the third or fourth one down, "All minutes and records shall be recorded and posted on the town's website"? Okay?
And then the committee shall, it says, "Cause all meetings", is that right, is that what you want to say? The second sentence right there, "The committee shall cause all meetings"?
Should be recorded.
Right. That didn't sound right, does it sound right to you? "Committee shall cause all meetings", I don't know, it just didn't sound right to me, so. That's the kind of awkward language that's used.
It's like old ways of saying.
I just want to mention something too about this whole thing about minutes, because there was a problem with minutes not being posted. There's a few committees in town where there's a problem with minutes not being posted, and so when I brought that up to the Public Safety Meeting, the response was, "That's not true, they were submitted to the Clerk's Office", so I tried to be accountable, and the way we originally said it was that all minutes shall be recorded and sent to the Town Clerk's Office or something, but you just sort of combined it to say, "All minutes and records shall be recorded and posted on the town's website".
Well, I think most chairs are responsible for, or the clerks of the committees are responsible for posting them on mytown.gov, are they not? I mean, I don't.
Yes, they are.
I guess that didn't happen, and it was almost like it was the clerk, and that's not true. So anyway.
I mean, I don't know that we should dump that on Lucy to post everybody's minutes.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So I mean, I think that would be a clarity maybe within the committee itself, to understand that one of the responsibilities of the clerk, if they're going to be the ones scheduling the meetings, that they're taking the notes, and they're the ones that are responsible, once the minutes have been approved, that they would be the ones submitting them to mytown.gov to to be posted officially, no? So I don't know if that needs to be and posted on the town's website by the committee clerk or something, if you wanted to clarify that, I mean.
Well, it's okay, if everybody else is agreeing with that, I'm just.
I think the committee needs to understand.
Right.
Yeah, I just think with, within that paragraph where you are there, though, the third line, there's a double this.
Right, but it's not on this copy, I saw that too, but I don't see it here. So in other words, the left of our packet, we have a cleaner copy.
Gotcha.
And it was not on that. I think we also had capital listed, "The committee shall review all past", well, actually, "The committee shall not have a budget, but maybe quest funding for specific purposes through the normal town processes such as finance, capital, select board, and town meetings", so I think it's worth putting capital there, only because it's a big expenditure.
Capital Committee? Add that, okay. All right. Then educate the residents of the town.
Okay, and I think we should get rid of the word "complex", we took that out of the name of the committee. And it's, and I think that, it's, see, I'm having, it says, there was a typo in the original one, but I don't know if it's in there, "The committee shall make efforts to educate the residents of the town on the need for. This building, or this facility.
Yeah, I mean.
And to understand current perception of the need, and then develop a plan in accordance with the findings, okay.
So change "complex" to this or these facilities, I mean, that, I mean, is that what you're trying to say? It might be more than one. For these, for these buildings, or something like this, for these.
Facility?
For this facility? Is this facility, okay, or these, thus, this? I mean, I guess this facility would encompass whether it could be one, two, or three buildings for that matter.
Right.
Okay. So change "complex" to "facility", okay?
Yeah, I think that, I think that was it.
Research and recommend two locations, giving priority to the town-owned land. Recommend that to the select board, once the location is approved by the select board, a new charge for the committee will be issued.
The only other thing is I don't think you need a comma after 11.
Oh, up top. Okay. Yep. Okay, so with those few changes, we have a motion to look at the revised version then, as approved, and then. Well, don't. Yeah, but let's finish the meeting, let's finish the meeting.
Yeah, 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 this is fine.
I'll hang around to sign them, or we can, we can sign them on Tuesday, or whatever. Yeah, we can sign them on Tuesday. Okay, so with that, are we all okay, we have a motion to approve this with the revisions?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody in agreement, yes?
Yes.
All right, fine. Okay, now, do we want to go back, we have to circle back to that one person? Where did he go? John O'Shea.
So right now, I was appointed as a member of the committee by the select board.
Right.
The police chief and the fire chief are already members.
They're de facto.
I don't think they have to come in front of us.
They're de facto members, okay.
We appointed Cindy Palmer
Right.
as a member of the Friends. We do not have a Finance Committee representative, and I don't know, John, if you could bring that to them, that we're hoping that somebody might be willing to be on this committee? I don't think Christina Madsen, we appointed, I think that she'd applied for at-large, I don't believe that they have voted for a member, so right now, I don't believe there's a historical member that's been appointed.
Yeah, I think, I don't think they've met recently. Trying to see when I think they were supposed to meet, though. Yeah, I think, excuse me, if I recall, Christina came in as one of the four community with experience in construction architecture. Oh, historical's meeting on the 8th, actually. So they may decide something at that meeting.
I mean, that would be inappropriate.
So right now, I guess I would, she didn't come forward to us from the Historical Commission, I don't believe. I think she's one of the at-large.
Unless they want to change that.
Unless they want to, yeah, they could clarify that, they're meeting on the 8th, they could clarify that.
Okay.
All right. And then, then we're down to the four members of the committee, community or surrounding area, and we've done one.
Well, Charlie's one, right?
Sarah, okay, Charlie, yes, Charlie, Charlie Kinnicky and Sarah Stein.
And Christina.
If she's coming in and out of that one, yes.
If she came in at her historical.
There's one more at-large position, right.
Unless they want to appoint her as a historical.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And that would free up.
Yeah.
Do we have a historical rep or no? No? From this committee?
No.
So the two so far are Charlie and Sarah Stein, you're saying?
And maybe Christina in parentheses as a third.
Unless it's clarified, yeah.
Yeah. So this would take up, John O'Shea would potentially be our fourth and last.
And Sarah's background.
And Sarah's background, she's an engineer?
Yes. She had a very impressive resume.
I'll make a motion to appoint John O'Shea, he comes recommended by our Fire Chief, he's been on a Public Safety Building Committee in the past in Springfield, and he's a retired firefighter.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right.
But can I just raise a question, if we filled that position with another person with a public safety background, which we already have, then we miss the opportunity, if anybody in construction, which I think is an important role for someone, I mean, in looking, going and visiting newly constructed senior centers, the composition of their building committees, had people in, in, in construction, in architecture, I mean, it had, you know, those representatives, I think, of the trades in there that I think, from what I could see, you know, built really good facilities for them. I'm just looking for, you know, the most comprehensive talent that we can gather together on the committee, I don't, it's nothing about any, any one person, it's really about what their background is and what they bring to this process. Because that would be the last slot we have available if Christina does not come in as the Historical Committee Representative.
Well, I'll be happy to reach out to Bob Cozum from Historical and just ask him that they address this at the next meeting, and I'm happy to reach out to Charlie Conicki, also give him an update on the current process, and that'll give us an idea of whether or not we have, what do we have available for at-large positions.
Yeah, well, so we have...
We still have one on my desk from Janet Brown.
Okay, because there are a couple of other people that were on the Public Safety Committee in the past.
Right.
That may or may not, you know, be appointed going forward, but...
So do...
I think one of the representatives you just mentioned does work in construction as an engineer, but you're saying that we should have, you know, the at-large people should have, we should have more people in construction?
Engineer, construction, architecture, we have, I mean, I'm assuming that someone from Finance or, you know, would have financial management experience.
Well, Finance Committee we have as a separate one, if we get anybody, then we'd be, you know, lucky on that one, maybe, but...
But there are, there are, you know, other kinds of...
Right.
For-profit financial people out there.
And previous public safeties experience, right now, I guess technically Charlie's occupying that spot.
But we also have that covered with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief in terms of public safety.
Right, but they're de facto members, I'm just talking about the four public members.
I understand, I, I know, but I'm looking for the accumulated talent.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah. Well, Historical meets on the eighth, which is only a week from now, do we want to, I don't know, do we want to hold on this, do we understand which slot Christina's occupying? Or not?
Well, if she goes to Historical.
Yeah.
Then there are two at-large posts over, but if she stays there...
There's only one.
And then, and, right, and there's one.
So this could be our last...
We have one person before us now, we have at least one on the Town Administrator's desk.
Right.
So I kind of go back to, this isn't our problem, the charge has been created, we should send whatever names we have to the committee and ask the committee to send somebody forward for consideration, let the, let the committee look at the charge now, here's where you're weak, here's where you're not, understanding this charge, here who's applied, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
To us, and then, I mean, we still have final say over it, but let them, you know, I don't know, I mean, Maureen, you're close because you're on both sides of it, right? You're in those, those committee meetings, but for the rest of, I mean, I don't know if, based on that group, if they'd be more, they'd be better off with a retired Deputy Fire Chief or this other woman, I don't know what her background is, I, I'm not in a position to judge, I'd rather act on a recommendation. That said, Maureen is our liaison, if you're making the recommendation, then I'll support you, but, I don't know.
I mean, I think somebody that has served on, it sounded like, I lost my paper, I thought he had served on a, in a Public Safety...
White Street Fire Station.
Committee before, right, is that why? I lost my paperwork here, sorry. I don't know, Rainey, what's, what's your thinking on this, would you like to move on this, we definitely have a slot open, I mean...
I think the purpose in us creating the proposition is because I think we want to make sure that we have good representation, we want to make sure that there's, you know, this committee has been in place for a very long time, and we really want new ideas, and we want some, generate some energy and some enthusiasm for this public safety complex. And I think that there were, the previous committee, there was a lot of pendulum swinging back and forth, back and forth, and at two different occasions, things got stalled. I'm just afraid that the, you know, I just want to make sure that it's a well-rounded committee and that there's a lot of new energy, and I'm just afraid that a recommendation would fall to the default previous committee. And I think that's what happened with COA, and when the Select Board stood up and stepped forward and said, "I think this would be in the best interest of seniors in town," that's when things changed a lot for the COA. So, I, I might want a recommendation, but I feel like the decision should be ours.
I mean, none of the others have come through the committee, I mean, the ones we've gotten that we've approved.
Right, that's the other thing.
None of them, I mean, Cindy and Sarah and Christina.
Well, correct, but I also vocalized back then, let's get the charge, you know, like I said, I...
No, but we did that when we, we had the draft charge already, I mean, we had, we'd already decided on this at one point.
Can we just wait until we get clarification from, from the Historical Commission?
Yeah, which they're meeting on the eighth, so, again, is one more thing we can pick up on the, well, we, they'll meet, you know, at the same time that we're going to be having our executive.
I think there's a position, there's a meeting that was posted for this committee on the fourteenth. I was informed that, that that was the case, but I haven't spoken to Charlie yet about that, so I'm happy to do that, and I'm happy to reach out to Bob Cozum and explain the situation.
Okay, so, but for tonight, do we want to therefore hang on to Mr. O'Shea's application, or do we want to keep on with the motion that you started to make here? This, we definitely have a slot open, we just don't know if we have two slots open, right?
What was the motion?
I made a motion to approve John O'Shea for the Public Safety Building Committee, and, you know, I still stand by, I mean, I think that he's been on a Public Safety Building Committee in the past.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, any opposed? Okay, Mr. O'Shea is on the committee, there we go, and we'll clarify these other...
Right, we'll clarify what is another at-large position based on what the Historical Society votes.
Right, okay, all right, okay.
Under minutes?
Yes, last thing, oh, not quite the last thing, but almost the last thing, we have three sets of minutes, October twenty-sixth, November nine, and November twenty-three, and I know it's taken Kathy a while to get these, I really appreciate her doing these, these have been some of our long meetings.
Yeah, one was almost five hours.
As we can tell from the, the minutes here, so quite a couple of things here.
I'm going to make a motion to approve all sets of minutes, October twenty-sixth, November ninth, and November twenty-third.
I will second that.
All right, were there any questions, I had just one correction, maybe, maybe, maybe?
I had two questions.
Okay, so go ahead and I...
First one I had has nothing to do with the minutes, but I'm just wondering, are we going to see the zoning board of appeals at our meeting at all? That was canceled, and I think we're still, I'm still interested in hearing from them.
Yep.
And the second thing is, on the set of minutes that, all right, let me go back and see which one they are. My goodness, okay, November ninth. Page one, two, three, four, five.
They're numbered, they're numbered at the bottom.
Oh, on the bottom, yeah, five oh six, when they're listing the requests for town meeting articles, it says, "Replacement, Dump Truck Plowed Truck Highway Department Borrowing," and it seems like the minute taker may have had a question on the total. Sixty-one thousand, I don't know if that wasn't clear on the tape or whatever, but that's, I didn't...
Yeah, and the question mark.
Is that what the amount was?
I think it might have been at the time.
Which set of minutes?
Uh, November ninth, if you can turn to page five out of six, in the list of articles for town meeting expenditures, let me know when you're there.
Yeah, there's a question mark in two places, there and the tree ward, I think, both.
Yeah.
What page?
Page five out of six.
Oh, that's why I was on page six.
You see where it has the list with the bullet points of all the...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it says, "Replacement of Dump Plowed Truck Highway Borrowing, two sixty-one," and it says question mark, and then the next one below it, it says, "Tree Ward and Transfer, eight thousand?" question mark. Was that a question that wasn't discernible from the tape?
That's actually maybe from my agenda.
Oh, don't worry about it, she can just correct it from the town heads, Ed will take you too long.
I think we should meet in Ed's office from now on.
Have them switch offices with the town clerk.
Okay, I didn't have anything else.
I had one thing on the, the amount of the, on page two of that same set of minutes, the committee has received, this is the Grants Committee at the very bottom, has received five oh four, four thirty-four, that would have been true if the sixth grant had come in, it had not come in at that time, so, and we'd got less than what we'd asked for, so actually that amount should be four thirty-one, six twenty-four, is what had been received at the time of the report out.
That's on page two?
Page two of the minutes on November nine, four thirty-one, six twenty-four, yep, bottom of the, page two.
Bottom of the page.
Under the Add-on Grant Committee?
Oh, yes, five oh four, four thirty-four, yeah.
So that was the only change I had there. And anything on the twenty-third at all?
I didn't see anything.
Yep, I think one thing, you know, as we go through these, I mean, it's good to have these sooner rather than later, but I know she's had a, a long haul to put all these together in the detail that she does, but I would just suggest, what I tend to do is I want to go through and I kind of highlight things that look like they're hanging out issues that we said that we want to come back to, or somebody had a great idea, I mean, let's try to keep on remembering these, and if we're not getting them up on the agenda, let us...
Yeah, that's why I mentioned about ZBA.
Yes, let us know.
Yes, those are right from the agenda, because at the time I was not sure on the final amount.
So just remove the question mark?
Yeah, we could get rid of that.
So just remove the question mark from the minutes?
No, I'd leave it there, it's right from the agenda.
At the time, there was a question we clarified following the meeting.
There's a question on the final amount.
Yeah, you didn't know what the amount was, but Ed, on that, while you were out, on that same set of minutes, on the second page, at the very bottom, under the Grant Committee, so there's a figure of, had received five oh four, four thirty-four, that was the total amount asked for, but what had been received at that time was less, so the new number there, bottom of the page two.
Yeah, so five oh four, four three four is not correct?
No, that's what, it would have been if we had gotten the sixth grant in and it had not been awarded at that time.
Yeah.
So it's four thirty-one, six twenty-four. That was five grants worth at that time, and then we got, after my report out, we got the fifty thousand on the compact. So we...
Five thirty-four?
Yep, five thirty-four, six twenty-four.
Five thirty-four, six twenty-four?
Correct. Yep, okay, so with those changes, I think we have a motion to approve all these sets of minutes, yes?
Aye.
And we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with the couple of changes on the November ninth minute, all right.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, I don't know, do we have any other pending business, we need to set some minutes meetings, we got, okay, we've got the Select Board meeting with Hampshire Regional, for those that want to attend that, on the seventh, we've got a regular Select Board meeting on the fifteenth, and how about, let's go ahead with the March meetings just real quickly, that should be looking like it's going to be the same set here, basically, March, hmm, March one, yeah, March one and March fifteen, regular meetings, okay? And I'm fairly sure we don't have any other pending item updates on the Old Town Hall or the Charter Building, right? So, with that in mind, I think I will take a motion to adjourn at the moment, we had a second?
And I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, ten forty-six, thank you, thank you.